I call this meeting of the organizational meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for November 13th, 2018. Present is Ms. Tricia Pitko, Ms. Jennifer Lieber, Mrs. Christine Vitale, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jennifer Jacobson, Mr. Nick Asa, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon-Kinelli, and Mr. Jeffrey Peterson. If I could ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I introduce the recommended motion, I'd like to take just a minute for personal privilege. It has been my joy in life to be Chair of this board for the last six years, and I know some of you are smiling and saying, "How can that possibly be?" But it is true. The nine of us have a responsibility to care for 10,000 students and to make sure that they get a good beginning in life, and when you can chair a board that has that responsibility, it is both an honor and a privilege. At the same time, as I said a month ago, do not think a board, volunteer board, should be chaired by the same person year in and year out. And rotational leadership, I think, makes a board stronger. And so, a month ago, I indicated at the late hour of about 11 o'clock that I would not stand for reelection, and so the board has chatted among themselves to determine who's next, and you're about to hear who's next. So I thank the staff, all 1,400 members of it. I thank the board members present and those who have served with me in the past. I thank my wife for all the time away, and I look forward to being a member, and I look forward to continuing to serve this community and our students in the future. With that said, (applause) it would be out of character for me to not admonish you that we don't take applause.[162.72][162.72](laughter) Anyway, so, election of temporary Chair, recommended motion is that in accordance with the bylaws, Superintendent Dr. Jones serve as temporary Chairman, Secretary during the election of board officers. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Seconded by Ms. Pitko. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? It's 9-0. The meeting is yours.
Is there a nomination for Board Chair, Ms. Gerber?
I'd like to nominate Christine Vitale.
Ms. Vitale, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for Board Chair? If not, nominations are closed. All in favor for the BOE nominee, please raise your hand. Congratulations, Ms. Vitale, 9-0.[211.12][211.12](applause) Is there a nomination for Vice Chair, Ms. Pittko?
I nominate Nick Asa.
Mr. Asa, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Mr. Asa as Vice Chair, please raise your hand. Congratulations, Mr. Asa, 9-0.[236.81][236.81](applause) Is there a nomination for Secretary?
I'd like to... Am I not on?
All right. I'd like to nominate Mrs. Gerber for Secretary.
Ms. Gerber, do you accept the nomination? Is there another nomination for Secretary? No? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Ms. Gerber as Secretary, raise your hand. Congratulations, Ms. Gerber, 9-0.[264.83][264.83](applause)
So we'll take a moment to rearrange chairs and turn the meeting over to Ms. Vitale.[274.02][274.02](laughter)
All right. You get to say it.
Go get your placard.
Goodbye, you know, you get to say it.
I wasn't worried about the placard, I was worried that I was going to be near the cookies.
Better you than me.[291.64][291.64](laughter)
I'd like to take a moment, a personal privilege, to thank Mr. Dwyer for his leadership of this board for the last six years. He saw us through some difficult times, and as a parent, I appreciate your leadership. As a board member, I've learned a lot from you, and I continue to learn from you, and I think I speak for the entire board, where we appreciate your service, your dedication, and your commitment to the 10,000 children of the Fairfield Public Schools, the staff in our community. So, thank you. To my fellow board members, thank you for your support. Kind of tough, hard to fill, someone who's been in the position for six years. I am bound to make some mistakes, hopefully not in the next five minutes, but be prepared. I'm counting on you all to guide me, and I'm looking forward to the year ahead. Looking forward to working with Dr. Jones, and we're late as it is, so let's get down to business. Only a couple of things on the organizational agenda. Discussion of board goals and education bylaws, really, right now, it's just an opportunity for any board members to share their thoughts. If anyone wants to propose a bylaws change, now is the time to share that with the rest of the board. We will then vote on it at the December 11th meeting. I bring to the floor, Ms. Maxon-Kinelli.
I don't know that I have a bylaw suggestion, but I just wanted to remind the board that this is the one thing where we can, it's submit and vote at one meeting, so that, obviously, the language needs to be submitted ahead of time. So I know I'll be looking, I always look the bylaws over every year, just to see if there's something that I think does need to be changed, and so I'll get that out to the board as soon as I come up with something. But I'm not proposing it at this time.
Does anybody have any other thoughts? If you do have any proposed suggestions, please get them to Mrs. Brown before Wednesday of the meeting in December, December 5th, I think, is the date. Also, check with her in terms of how the bylaw should be constructed, and that's it. I, just for myself, I spoke to Mr. Peterson, I'm thinking about a possible bylaws change to change the order of the agenda, to maybe put public comment after presentations on the agenda, so something for you all to think about. Just very often, I find that we have members of the public that come to hear a presentation, maybe they don't want to comment before the presentation, but they can't comment directly after, they have to wait to the end of the meeting. So something to just think about, that that's probably coming your way. The next thing is committee and liaison assignments, that should be at your seat. Just over the next few weeks, review what your committee assignment is, let me know if you want to change, if you want to stay where you are. Also, if there's any other liaisons that you think our board should be involved in, there's a lot going on in town with the Trees Planning Committee, the Transit Orient Development Committee, there's been some talk about having a legislative body liaison from the board, so if there's anything new that you want to add, also, please share that information with me as well. Any other discussion on this agenda item? Okay, so, motion to adjourn from the organizational meeting? Ms. Jacobson? Seconded by Mr. Asa. Meeting adjourned? No? No? A vote? See, that wasn't even five minutes.[521.29][521.29](laughter) All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Do I have to tap?
If you want to.[530.12][530.12](laughter)
All right, I need water. Hey, come on, I told you. Yeah, I know, it's a different, it's a different show.[537.54][537.54](laughter)
Yes. Sweetie, that really helped me. What?
That's not a good idea.
Oh, that, yes. Okay, I called this regular meeting of the November 13th Board of Education meeting to order. Present, we have, do I do that again, or no? Everybody's still here.[562.04][562.04](laughter) We're going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance, being that we already did, and moving right to student reports. Thank you, students, for all showing up today. I'm sure you have homework to do when you've waited for a half hour, so let's get to it. Let's start with Fairfield Ludlow High School. Ms. Koolit, we'll start with you, me and you're at the end.
Okay, so first, I wanted to mention that lots of sports teams at our schools, such as field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer, and volleyball, have been doing really well in the state's tournaments. They proceeded to the first few rounds, and then they got knocked out. And then, the other thing is that we've been having recently is the senior spirit days, such as Career Day, Character Day, and Decades Day, where the seniors get to dress up and participate in fun spirit events. The most recent one was our Halloween parade, where the best costumes got to get, like, awards and stuff like that, so it was very fun.
So, we recently had our veterans concert, run by Mr. Albano, our band teacher, and we played various anthems, you know, from the United States military, and members stood in the audience, and it was a great way to sort of become aware of where veterans were in our community, and to be more aware, I guess, of our, their service. We also have Alumni Day coming up, which we're really excited about. It's the day before Thanksgiving break. Every kid loves it. It's a great way to catch up with friends and to really maintain the Ludlow community that we're so proud to share.
Thank you. Moving on to Fairfield Ward.
We are very proud of our girls volleyball, field hockey, swimming, and both our boys and girls soccer teams for also qualifying for states. We also had one cross-country runner make it all the way to the New England's, which he participated in last weekend, so we're very proud of him as well. Looking ahead, we have our Thanksgiving football game, which everyone knows about. It's against Ludlow, which will be hosted at Ward this year, starting at 10:00. And our fall concerts are also now in full swing with our various ensembles. This weekend, our fall drama production will be putting on three different performances of Three Sisters, two of them being performed at 8:00 on Friday and Saturday, and the following on Sunday at 2:00.
Well, last Wednesday, we had the ninth grade underage drinking and risky behavior forum. It was a great turnout of students, as well as parents, and we had some excellent speakers, including an ER doctor, a police officer, a recovering young adult, and it was sponsored by a wonderful PTA. And we also had some senior dress-up days at Ward this year. Some of the iconic parts were on Halloween. We had six determined young individuals dress up as various letters in our Ward acronym, as well as Captain Ward. And I also got to dress up as my physics teacher, that was pretty fun. You can check Ward Focus for that, which is our newspaper. And I'd say that just about wraps it up. We had a nice Halloween parade, which was finished off by the chanting of the Ward acronym, led by Mr. Abbling, of course.
Does anybody have any questions for our students? I have one for you guys. Can you just share the year that you're in? Are you all seniors, or are you, can you just share the year that you're in, and maybe one school activity that you're involved in? Just being that we're going to be spending the next seven months together.
Hi. I'm a junior, and I'm also a fencer on the Fairfield Ludlow Ward team.
I'm a senior, and I'm on mock trial.
I'm a junior, and I'm in the best buddies club.
This is my senior year, and I'm the treasurer of the science pool team.
Thank you. And thanks again for volunteering. Looking forward to having you guys here. Okay, now, time for public comment. Just a reminder, you can only comment on one, you have to comment on agenda items. Three minutes per public comment. You can only comment on a topic once, so if you comment now, you cannot comment again at the end of the meeting. There will also be a public comment prior to any action items. So who wants to go first? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name is Sally Connolly, and I live at 682 Tonxus Hill Road in Fairfield. This is going to be a really brief comment, but I had looked over the presentation for the special education audit, whenever it was supposed to be presented a little while ago. Just wanted to point out a couple of concerns from the perspective of being a speech-language pathologist. There was a recommendation made to maybe increase the utilization of SLPAs, so the Speech Language Pathology Assistance. I just wanted to make sure that in looking at it, you know, there's not as much licensing and regulation as somebody who's been in the field for 15 years. I've actually never worked with an SLPA. It's not quite as, it's nowhere near as common as the PTA and Coda, that's Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant. Also, I think that would definitely come into play with the centralization versus decentralization. Assistants are supposed to be really overseen by the speech-language pathologists who have the certification, and I know many people, as we've heard before, are really pushing for the centralized model, which hopefully will continue to be very much on the table. And then, lastly, certainly, anyone in the rehab field, there's a constant diagnostic treatment that's going on throughout, you know, when you're working with a student, and I think being able to have the skills to constantly change and adjust your treatment protocols with the nuances of the changing, I say patients, I work with adults mainly, but with the students, I think it's really important that we have people who are going to be able to adjust, and certainly, the data has shown that our students in Fairfield do really well, based on the early intervention that they're receiving in the ECC compared to peers in other districts. So, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm hereby requesting that we direct the decision about ECC to solely a conversation...
A name?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm Jerianne Mitchell, I'm a speech-language pathologist at the Early Childhood Center. So I'm hereby requesting that we direct the decision about the ECC to solely a conversation about a new facility. Our staff works very hard to meet the unique and diverse needs of our students. A strong sense of community has been created, as you have all heard and read, from the support and testimonial from both staff and families. The unique need of our students requires a developmental approach, which we have worked hard to create and foster optimal outcomes for our students at the Early Childhood Center. The impact of rolling admissions is another factor to consider, and one that the early elementary is not familiar with. The special ed audit commends the ECC for our strong outcomes. These outcomes are some of the best in the state, despite our huge caseloads with limited peer models. The ECC is highly regarded as one of the best preschool programs in the state. At the September Board of Ed meeting, administration shared in their presentations that the ECC was in capacity back in 2014, yet no plans were made for expansion at that time, nor was it considered last year when the satellite ECC classroom was opened at Stratfield. Despite the assertions that our current decentralized model is working and the classes are equal, unfortunately, they are not. Placement changes were made this year, reflecting concerns that there are differences. Additionally, new evaluations are not placed equally. The collaboration that exists at ECC and the focus on developmentally appropriate practice are much stronger at Ward currently. The sole conversation should be about finding a new space to house the ECC with an appropriate 50-50 ratio. Room for growth should also be included. As committed members of our community, our sole focus is our students' learning. Since when is space, or rather, the lack of space resulted in a programmatic change? Additionally, when a model excels or benefits our students, why would we want to disband or decentralize that program? The sole focus for ECC should be finding the space to meet our growing needs. The Board of Ed is currently designing a new space to meet Mill Hill's needs. No conversation was ever heard about dispersing these students to other locations due to lack of space. We need to learn from our history. At one point, the ECC was, we were centralized years ago, because the decentralized model that was in place back then was not working. We all know strong early intervention has positive gains, not only on optimizing individual outcomes, but financial savings in the long term. The unifying program works. We should not let space dictate educational programming. We should not let a facility issue break up our school. We need to find the space that is required to continue to let the Early Childhood Center flourish. We are stronger together. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Frank Sahagan, 20 Chelsea Street, also a teacher, eighth grade social studies, at Fairfield Woods Middle School. And since you'll have the opportunity this evening to ask questions of the consultants who prepare the audit on special education, I'd like to make some comments and suggestions for your questioning. The goal of the audit, as we know, included, among some other things, to review our special ed programs and services, as well as analyze the delivery of the services in a least restrictive environment. Yeah, there are other directives to compare us to different DURGs, look at the EIP process, and look for efficiencies, but I'd hope that behind our calling on this work, there was a presumption that special education, whether it be in staffing, organization, processes, we were not pleased with how things were going. At a previous Board of Ed meeting, there was a quick presentation of the findings you're about to hear firsthand, and I must say, I was underwhelmed with those findings, and in some cases, would take exception with them. I found way too much of an emphasis on comparative data and many comments to be vague and overly generalized. I heard the word "celebrate" often in that presentation, and don't think the word "celebrate" adequately captures what we're experiencing in our schools and our classrooms. There's much in this report about comparing Fairfield students to staffing ratios with averages in DURGs A and B, and while this might be noteworthy, I'm not sure what it's really telling or guiding us. I'd argue that meeting special education needs of students is problematic throughout the state, and it won't be solved by looking at comparative data. I'd go on to argue that the differences are insignificant anyway, and not surprising or enlightening. Second, there's a comment in the report with respect to culture and what could be working better, indicating that some educators were, quote, "overly dependent upon special educators", end quote, and were adhering to, quote, "old-school thinking", that these students were the responsibility of special educators. While I suspect there may be some, from my experience as a gen ed teacher, I for one take exception, and again, question its worthiness to include it in the report if it's "some". Next, organizationally, what's working well? The comment that instructional materials were available to faculty to support teaching and learning would lead you to believe that we have the resources readily at hand. While there is some technology available for assisting students with special needs, it's far from easy to find the resources needed, and could only wish you could see how much time and effort we put in the classrooms to find appropriate resources. And the comment made at the last meeting where a recommendation was made after reviewing IEPs, that there was a need for more explicit linking of goals and objectives to grade-level expectations, calls for further exploration. In my eighth grade class, I have students who are reading at 11th and third grade levels. I'm not sure what they're getting at here. And then, what could be working better organizationally? The two call-outs were focused on PPTs, a centralized diagnostic process that I'll go out on a limb and say that many special educators would not agree with. Ones I've spoken with feel this will remove them from the kids in the developing of IEPs and would not be best for kids. Nothing stated as to what goes on in the classroom. I'd like to finish. Having served on the FEA negotiating committee for the last contract, and noting the extensive discussions we had about special ed, and the many problems and challenges we were facing in being compliant to IEPs in the light of the extraordinary amount of time and effort special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, speech and language pathologists, and psychologists were putting in, the need and challenges to more appropriately defined caseloads, the amount of time special educators spend away from providing services to kids, I was hoping to see something more concise, concrete.
It's time, I'm sorry.
Almost done. Ten more seconds. Specific, easier-to-understand remedies to the situation, not so much on availability ratio indexes to DURGs, which I would again argue are overly generalized, not particularly useful, misleading in addressing what's broken and needing to be fixed. So, no, I'm not a special ed teacher.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
I venture to say that this report does little to allay their concerns, comfort and courage them, or give direction towards helping them do their job.
That was more than 10 seconds.[1381.12][1381.12](laughter) You got off easy that time. Hello.
Hi. My name is Marie Riggs. I'm a speech-language pathologist at Roger Ludlow Middle School. We sent a letter to the board, and on behalf of myself and my colleagues, I would like to read the highlights. Dear esteemed members of the Board of Ed, we would like to share with you our role as the district's speech-language pathologists. According to ASHA, the governing body for SLPs, SLPs have integral roles in education and are essential members of school faculties. This includes working across the ages, from preschool to high school, with a range of disorders, and ensuring our work is educationally relevant, emphasizing language literacy, and providing culturally competent services. We provide a continuum of services following evidence-based practice, including individual, small group, and push-in to gen ed classrooms. Certain types of delays that require individual services include apraxia, autism, and children who use AAC. The complexities of many students in the CLC also have intensive needs that require individual services. FPS currently employs a caseload approach rather than a workload approach, which means that the number of students is not necessarily related to the amount of work that the student requires. For example, a CLC student may require more material prep, programming AAC systems, and weekly team meetings. The Futures Audit Report states that the SLPs are working efficiently with respect to direct service time. However, they state that the percentage of individual treatments of 54% is higher than expected, and that the average service minutes per week of 64 is excessive and warrants attention, especially with respect to the preschool population. As SLPs, we agree that we are efficient. We are appalled at the generalization that an average of 64 minutes per week of service is excessive, especially at the preschool level. Due to the heterogeneity of our student population, an overgeneralization like that is dangerous. Evidence-based practice notes that early intervention is effective, and providing more services at a younger age can result in a decreased need for services later. Also, CLC students require significant levels of individual services. The number of students brought back to district from out-of-district placements bring with them significant hours of individual speech. These outliers negatively impact totals. SLPs support Futures' idea of level-specific evaluation teams. However, we're confused by their recommendation to revisit systematic district-wide entry and exit criteria for speech and language services, as all SLPs are required to follow the Connecticut State Guidelines for Eligibility. Overall, SLPs, like other team members, work hard to promote individual student growth. We work within the educational setting and synthesize many aspects of students' language use to promote optimal outcomes. We work within the high standards that FPS sets for keeping students in the gen ed setting. We also contribute to the higher graduation rate for special ed students than our counterparts. We encourage the district to approach...
Time, can you finish your sentence?
...our caseloads from a workload approach to ensure that all students are afforded the opportunity to make the maximal growth possible and become productive contributing members of our community. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Allison Jacoby, 2929 Morehouse Highway. I'm employed as a paraprofessional at the ECC, and I am reading a letter that was sent on behalf of the Team of Paraprofessionals and Special Education Trainers. We are the team of paraprofessionals and special education trainers of the Early Childhood Center. We respectfully submit our input regarding a centralized versus decentralized model for our school. As paraprofessionals and special education trainers, we work in conjunction with one another to meet the individualized needs of our students. We collaborate and share information and experiences with our students on a daily basis. Because of our extensive training and professional relationships, we are able to provide for all the students in our school, not just those in our individual classrooms. This allows for a seamless transition when we need to share classroom duties during lunch and recess or cover for a staff absence. We are able to consult with a highly experienced and qualified staff of classroom teachers, speech pathologists, social workers, psychologists, and OTPT professionals on a regular basis during classroom push-ins, co-treats, therapy sessions, and scheduled team meetings. The knowledge we gain from these experiences directly translates into a higher level of care and support for our students. This team approach allows us to quickly resolve student problems as they arise, and even prevent them from occurring. In addition, with multiple classrooms in our building, we are able to share classroom and student materials quickly and easily. The materials used in a preschool classroom are very different from those used at the elementary level. This also applies to our OT room. Many of our students require regular OT breaks, and we are able to smoothly transition them to and from the OT room and its age-appropriate equipment, given its proximity to our classrooms. In summary, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. The community that is intrinsic to the Early Childhood Center makes us better professionals. Thank you for your time and for considering these points during your decision-making process.
Thank you. Any additional further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the presentation of the special education audit. I'm going to defer to Dr. Jones to give us a little intro, just...
I will actually invite our guests to come forward, and we're going to jump right into it. We have given just an overview, I believe, at our last meeting, some of the highlights. The audit was originally, just as a reminder, was originally scheduled on the night when we had the large flood in Fairfield, and we ended up having to cancel, so we do apologize that it's coming so late. We were hoping it would be earlier in the year, but we're happy that you're here tonight, and we didn't have bad weather that kept you away. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Van Guzy.
Yes, and I do apologize for the brief overview at two minutes to 11:00 at the last board meeting. We tried to get in some highlights before the meeting ended. We were rained out from our October meeting, as many of you remember, so I'm here, happy to present two of our consultants from Futures. I'm going to ask them to give a little bit of background information on them, on each of them, and to introduce them. them, and to introduce themselves. I will say, I did get questions from several board members this afternoon. I have answered most of them. I have not proofed the answers. I will be getting these out to you tomorrow. If you want to ask the questions tonight, we'd be happy to answer them as well. So I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Michael Nyman, who led this project.
Good evening, and thank you. As Mr. Mankusi said, I think we have to start with introductions. My name is Michael Nyman. I'm the Executive Vice President of Futures Education. I head up our Special Education Review Division, and that takes us all the way from Maine to California, and all points in between. We've been doing these special ed reviews for about 10 years, and my background, my personal background is a speech-language pathologist. I know that's gonna be part of today's review. I found my background as a speech-language pathologist very helpful in understanding the delivery system. And again, I thank the board for the opportunity to present tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John McGuire. I have to use the mic. My name is John McGuire. I serve as Executive Director with Futures Education for the New York region. My background is I began my career professionally as a teacher of emotionally disturbed adolescents in urban high schools. I moved from that into administration of special education programs for many years, and then into general ed administration as Assistant Superintendent in school districts, and then into Superintendent of Schools positions. I retired in 2010 as a Superintendent of Schools in Albany County, New York.
All right, I think we're gonna just wait a second to get the image up. There you go.
Hold, did it do it?
There you go.
That's the other one?
That's the other one. That's after. There you go, and if you can maximize it maybe. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Had it all the time. Thank you. So I wanna acknowledge the other team members, Dr. Palladino, Dr. Vida, Dr. Ramos. They were in the field with Mr. McGuire and me. This is a very labor-intensive project, and you're gonna see in a minute the methodology that we brought to bear. So having that level of team support was important for us to get to all the schools and all the programs. It was also a very data-rich report, as you can see, and Ms. Mortenson and Mr. Boyle were very helpful to us at our office, putting all that data together. We got to know a lot of the databases from Connecticut, our internal databases, all that was brought to bear, again, in this report that we'd like to present tonight. We also want to acknowledge the district. Again, we were very appreciative of the partnership, the ability to come in and work with the district. All the school principals, again, we visited all the schools, had a really nice sample size, you're gonna see in a second what that looked like. Mr. Mankusi, Michelle at the office, there was a lot of data, and I keep joking with Rob, he can never get rid of us because of the weather, but you will miss us at some point, Rob, I know. But we do want to thank everybody that contributed to the project. So tonight's presentation are to review the methodology of the study, to see how we arrived at these findings, present pertinent information for contextual purposes, sort of the lens of special education. It feels a little bit like bringing Cole to Newcastle, talking to a board that I think is very versed in students that are struggling, but Mr. McGuire's gonna talk a little bit about sort of our perspective, provide key findings, provide corresponding areas of opportunity or recommendations, and provide a forum for discussion. At the very end, we do have as much time as the board feels is appropriate to answer questions, but we would like this to be a forum for you to ask questions throughout, because we know that there might be clarification questions that you might have. So any particular slide, any particular line item, we would invite you to ask questions throughout. So the specific areas of review were related to services, utilization of paraprofessional supports, out-of-district placements, the continuum of services within the district, the preschool program, the organizational structure and district coordination of program and services. So those are the six general areas that we partnered with the district. And when we look at sort of the constructs, where do those fall? Because again, we are always looking for ways to present the information in the most intuitive way. We felt that those areas fall nicely into two main constructs. One is organizational considerations, and the other is continuum of supports, which is a special ed, but it's also includes SRBI or ways to support students in the gen ed side. We take some artistic license and include that in the continuum of supports. In the way we'll present the information tonight, which mirrors that of the report, are findings and the areas of opportunity. So the methodology, we feel very good about that 206 interviewees. I think, John, that wins the record of the most interviewees we've had, and we've been in some rather large school districts, about three times the size of Fairfield, and we know that it was very important for school leadership to make this very all-inclusive and have a big tent. So we were accommodating, we know the district went out of its way to invite as many stakeholders, I think the number kept growing, of the number of people that wanted to talk to us. And we ended up with 216 stakeholders across numerous disciplines, central office staff, school-based leaders, certified special and gen ed teachers, paraprofessionals, related service providers, parents of students with disabilities, and we got a chance to talk to board members as well. So again, we feel quite good about that representative sample. When we interviewed people, the first thing we said is, "What you say here stays here. It's confidential." And that's why you'll see in the report, there's no attribution, there's no way to know who said what. And the questions were catered to the interviewees' particular area of expertise and the relevance to the areas that we put forth in the review. And I want to just give an example of some of those intersecting questions. This culture of student ownership, this idea, is it our student? Is it that student? And again, we understand with a district the size of Fairfield, different schools, different ways of doing things, that there's gonna be, there's gonna be differences. But it's very important for us to understand this culture of student ownership, because we feel that special education works well when those silos between gen ed and special ed are broken down, when it's just our kid. That question we asked of all stakeholders, that was an intersecting question. We also asked about resources, including professional development and materials. And then we differentiated some interview questions. For example, the special ed teacher, we would ask, "Do you have time to meet with your co-teaching dyad in gen ed?" And for parents, we would ask, "Have you felt part of the PPT process with your child?" So again, there were intersecting questions, and there were diverging questions that were really particular to the people that we were talking to. Methodology also included nonevaluated site visits to all schools and programs. We got to every single school, including the Fitzgerald campus, and we also visited CES and Trumbull, because that was sort of the biggest out-of-district placement facility. We did a lot of comparative analyses to district reference groups, both A, DURG A and DURG B. We thought it was important for the district to see, again, understanding that we provided information that was specific to the district, so also to understand how the district compares in terms of resources. And the only real way to do those apples-to-apples comparisons are to compare the district to the other DURG. And again, even though Fairfield is in DURG B, that's where it lies in terms of its DURG. Fairfield is also the home to all the DURG A districts as well. So we wanted that two-level comparison. Document reviews, we did a stratified random review of 100 IEPs, and again, no student, information was ever revealed, there's no way to know who those students were, but we took a stratified random sample from each school across disciplines, and we also did a workload analysis. You'll see in the report, we spent a lot of time looking at those workloads of the service providers to understand that delivery model. So we're gonna let Mr. McGuire talk a little bit. Again, I talked about contextual information, and I'll let John talk a little bit about that.
In terms of programmatic orientation, one of the things we try to understand is a fluid continuum of supports for all students. In terms of interventions, we try to get our arms around the full array of supports beyond just the traditional continuum of services in special education. So we look at everything from Tier One supports, which are available to all students in the general ed classrooms, up through and including special education programs of intensity. In terms of environments and inclusion, we look at everything from the general ed classroom to the continuum of in-house options in special education programming, up to and including out-of-district program placements. This is a conceptualization that's been around for a long time in special education. Some people refer to it as a pyramid or cascade, simply depicting that even beyond special education, the majority of our students, we would look to see at the least intensive levels of support, excuse me, in the general ed program. And as you move upwards in terms of intensity of student needs, the programs become more individualized, more intensive, and you would see appropriately fewer and fewer of your students needing those most intensive services. We look at what we call vertical articulation or alignment of the program to understand if the program array of supports is rationally configured as students move upward through the system. By way of example, let me talk to you about a partner we worked with some time ago where it turned out not to be particularly rational, where an array of services and program models was available at the elementary level, turned out not to be available at the middle school levels, and then was available once again at the high school level, which begged all kinds of questions in terms of how are we placing students at the middle level? Are we really placing students based on student need, or are we placing students based on what's available? So we're looking for that kind of a continuum that is rationally configured so student needs can be met based on the needs of the student at each level. Additionally, we look at what we refer to as horizontal alignment or articulation, which basically has two concepts. First of all, the opportunities for students with disabilities to interface and be included with students who are not identified as disabled, so non-disabled peer inclusion. Also, to understand if students with disabilities have access to the general education curriculum. What we found, based on the responses of those interviewed, there was a, we were given a healthy sense of student ownership across the district. And what we mean by that is, to what extent do all of the adults in the school see students with disabilities as their students? This was corroborated, this high level of ownership, by data pertaining to least restrictive environment. In other words, the inclusion of students with disabilities. And you can see by comparison with your reference groups that Fairfield includes more of its students with disabilities for 80% or more of their school day. Interviewees expressed appreciation for the professional development offerings as well as resources and materials available to them to support student learning and to support the teaching process. There was consistent appreciation on the part of those interviewed for the support from the Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs, the efforts he is making to build bridges to all stakeholders. It was the perception of those responding that too many individuals have responsibility for the coordination and facilitation of the PPT processes and meetings at the secondary level, which has the potential of affecting the consistency of implementation of student programming. Just a word about that. The more folks you have involved and having responsibility, and we see this often in school districts, the greater the potential for differential outcomes from your meetings, from your IEP meetings. This is not to question the intent or the capability of the people leading the meetings or those participating. Could be the most student-centered of people, invariably you will wind up with different IEPs coming out of those meetings. So that's just something that we think is not a place you want to be as a district, and we have some thoughts about that further on. In response to the need for additional training with respect to facilitating PPT meetings to ensure consistency, the district leadership has recently instituted an elementary program facilitators.
So here we want to talk about, under organizational considerations, this idea of the ARI, the availability ratio index. Again, it is very, well, potentially formulaic. It is based on a calculation, so we want to understand, how is the district's resource in terms of personnel? Yes? Oh, I apologize. So this part of looking at organizational, it's at the ARI. It really is a way to gauge the district's resources across disciplines in comparison to, again, the other DURGs. And the way to do that was to take the in-district population. Again, this feels a bit like rearview driving, because we know that's a moving number, but this was the number when we finished our part of the analysis in, over the summer. Again, that might have changed a little bit, that'll change from week to week, but this was the number that we were working with at the time, that 1247. And we, again, we use that as the numerator, and we divided that by the number of staff across disciplines. So when we looked, starting with administration, the six full-time equivalent central office administration staff, so that comprised the Executive Director and the five coordinators, when we look at that, that is staffed to expectations. Looking at certified special education teachers, again, what we're dealing with, the DURG A and the DURG B, that is, that's somewhat of a static number, 16, 17, that was the most recent data we had in Connecticut. There was no way to get 17, 18 data. We had to rely on what Connecticut was reporting for their most recent data. The Fairfield number was changing. So for beginning of the school year, they had, Fairfield had invested in a few more special ed teachers. So that ratio of 10.14, so in other words, the lower the number, the higher the ratio, if that makes sense. So that 10.14 reflects a higher personnel structure than the 10.92 at the end of the 17, 18 academic school year, if that makes sense, because again, the district added staff. Paraprofessionals, that's 6.32, compares with a DURG A of 6.0 to 1. So in other words, in DURG A, the averages for every six students with disabilities, there's one certified special education paraprofessional. These are distinguished from other types of paraprofessionals, like library aides or lunch aides, that again, are non-certified staff. These are funded under special education. DURG B is a much more generous staffing model at 5.5, so for every 5.5 students with disabilities, there's one non-certified paraprofessional. Fairfield has the least staffed of 6.32. Is it much less staffed than DURG A? No, but it is sizable. Behavioral health providers, again, we cluster them, that's the way Connecticut reports them. They don't parse out school psychology, social workers, and guidance counselors, they report them as an aggregate. So the ARI for Fairfield, it's 6.5, is right at the DURG A average, and a little more staffed than DURG B, because again, that 18 represents, for every 18 students with disabilities, there's one of those health professionals. Physical therapy staff, the 3.9 FT, again, these are contracted, equates to an expected ARI of 320. Again, and I gave an example, some light reading for you in one of the appendices where we report that workloads, I think it's fascinating. But there you can see how we analyzed the related service providers' workloads. And again, we talk about a workload, not a caseload, because there's a lot that goes into people's everyday delivery of services. It might be Medicaid, it might be evaluations, it might be ordering augmentative equipment, whatever that looks like. So it's not just about- be ordering augmentative equipment, whatever that looks like. So it's not just about caseload. It truly is about workload, and that's, that's the model we, we used. So here, again, it's anonymous. We did not provide actual related service providers' names, because this review was meant to be systemic. It was not meant to single anybody out or any particular school out. But there you can see our methodology. And that, the way we broke out that particular service provider is the way we did it for all the disciplines. You can see in the appendices, speech, PT, OT, that's how it looked. And again, it allowed us to make those apples-to-apples comparisons. Speech-language staff, when we look at the 30.5 budget FTE, that equates to an ARI of 40.1 to 1. That is not the caseload of the SLPs. What that means is for every 40.1 in-district students with IEPs, there's one speech-language pathology staff available to support that group. Again, that's not to say that they're seeing them, but that's, that's the way we provide that apples-to-apples comparison. That compares to an expected ARI of 70 to 1. In other words, Fairfield is more generously staffed compared to other DURG B, and that is an empirical number, that's 70 to 1. We have done quite a few DURG B analyses in Connecticut, and that 70 to 1 is the average of those DURG Bs. And again, that could be a celebration. We know speech-language is a very difficult discipline to find. There's a report out from the Connecticut State that this is a shortage area now and shall be a shortage area for a very long time. It's very hard. There aren't enough graduate programs to support speech-language. It's just, they're very hard to get into, and they're not keeping up with the demand because there are so many kids in the system that need the service. So again, when John and I report these, we report this as data. We can say that this is a generous staffing model, but it really is a value judgment for the community, for the district, to determine what to do with that data. And I'm sure, John, if you have additional.
I was just, I was just thinking, this evening, we reported out recently to a board and community in New York State, and as a part of the data, we want to remind them as well that the data doesn't celebrate or criticize. It is data. Districts find it helpful for reflection and consideration. Is this where we want to be? Is this working well for our students, et cetera? Essential questions. In this particular district where we were reporting, they were well above the range that one would have anticipated in some areas. For example, school psychology, mitigating factor in that district, which I hasten to add to the board at that, that presentation, the district was sending virtually none of its identified students out of district. So what appeared to be very generous staffing in certain key areas was enabling them to effectively serve students that otherwise would have been placed in out-of-district programs. So there are always local factors that enter into, as Michael says, the value judgment on these pieces of data.
Sure. I want to talk a little about the average service minutes per week of 64. So when you think about a bell-shaped curve, and again, John and I have a large database to draw from. Typically, what we find is the average of speech-language service minutes is about 45 to 48 minutes. There's the bell-shaped curve. Some students get 30, some might be on consult, or 15, and some might get 75 or 90. When it all comes out, typically, we see that average of about 45. So that 64 average service minutes does warrant detention, especially with respect to the, the individual treatments of 54%, because again, speech and language is a related service, unless it's, speech is a primary disability, speech-language disability. But OT, PT, speech and language, these are related services in a school. They come in from an educational model to help students access their curriculum. It's not a medical model. It's not a hospital. And therefore, the primary role in terms of best practices is for these related service providers to help students access their education. So that jumped out at us in terms of an interesting data point. Occupational therapy staff, the 10.75 FTE, equates to an ARI of 116 to 1. Again, for every 116 students with IEPs in district, there's one occupational therapy staff available to them, not their caseload. And that compares to an expected ARI of 170 to 1. In other words, it's more generously staffed. The percentage of direct services is high. Again, it's coincidental, that same 70% is the direct service time. The industry standard is about 65%. So when you think about how is a therapist spending his or her time, typically about 65% of the time is spent doing IEP-directed treatment. The other 35% is some other PPT meetings, paperwork, travel, whatever that looks like. So that's a high number. However, the number of individual services for OT is very high, 70%. We typically don't see that. Again, it's an educational model. Some students require the individual treatment for their FAP, for them to access and get educational benefit from the IEP. However, that, that struck us as an extremely high number, inconsistent with the medical model. The district's expenditures devoted to special education of 25% compares to a DURG average of 21% and a DURG A average of about 23%. But the expenditures per, per special ed student is lower by comparison to DURG A. So Fairfield is spending just under $39,000 per special education student. And again, it is lower by comparison to the DURG A, but higher in comparison to the DURG B of 32, 600. So areas of opportunity, these are, again, recommendations for consideration. This first one is creating a central diagnostic team to equalize access to services. And again, we'll talk about the advantages and some of the challenges to both. So these are, this first central diagnostic model is a level-based, and really, these are teams that would be aligned to expertise. So preschool, maybe students with, with high needs and the CLC programs, secondary, whatever that looks like. Basically, the teams are aligned by expertise to address the students. And because the model is level-based, it allows for specialization. So the evaluators, again, have a comfort with that population that they're testing. The disadvantages, the model requires different diagnostic teams to conduct the testing. And as the student age, it might not be seamless other models. So let's say that Team One model is the preschool team. They have a particular expertise, and we know preschool is a very different construct than other. But now the student, it's time for their three-year, and now they're seven, and now maybe Team Three has a particular expertise with early primary. So again, there's specialization, but it, it affects vertical articulation, because now we've got different teams evaluating the student at different times.
Could I just jump in for a second?
Please.
It is very common for districts who ask us to partner with them, to ask us for ideas about organizational structure, whether it's administration of special ed-related services programs, or diagnostics, or whatever. And, and I just want to make the point that we're happy to provide these options. We are not here to promote or sell any particular model. We've seen these models, many of them in action. They work, but they really, again, come back to local decision-making and engagement of, of key stakeholders in considering the various options to arrive at the decision about what's going to work best at Fairfield.
John, this next level, this next central diagnostic model is campus-based. So basically, the teams follow the children. As they, as they have their initials, as they have their three-years, they follow the, the children from school to school. And you can see, as John was talking about, vertical articulation, where that student was in the middle of that model, and as the student goes from school to school, grade to grade, does the program contingent to meet the needs. Well, it's a wonderful model, because these teams follow that children, that same child. Again, assuming that the same teams are staying in place, they know the child, they know the families, they make that connection. And again, that's, that's the beauty of this model. But this model also requires the team to address the needs of students across multiple grades. And again, it requires that expertise, whereas before we had the level-based, this model requires maybe a team to be versed in augmentative communication, and maybe high-level, SLD, OHI, whatever that looks like. Again, because it's campus-based, they need to have expertise in all those categories and all those areas as the child progresses. This next one is hybrid. So if you picture like a bookend, where Teams One and Five would have specialization, one in preschool on the left, and the other, the secondary high school on the right, and the other three would have, you know, more of that, that campus base where they follow the child, that's, that's a hybrid model that, again, maybe takes the best of some of those, those different, those different models. Talked about the coordinator position right now, under the director. They could be redeployed in different ways, and we recommend that the model that the district might choose to line, again, as John said, we're not here to promote any particular model, but in our view, the best organizational models are ones that would align the diagnostic model with the coordinator model. And here are just some for, for consideration, where the coordinators might be split across the two preschool elementary, or two assigned to preschool elementary. There might be a middle school coordinator, one at the high school, one at Fitzgerald Campus, and one for out-of-district. And again, these Level Two models, different ways to realign them, and the advantages are, it allows for specialization, where the coordinators can oversee populations that have particular expertise. So the out-of-district coordinator might have, you know, particular desire to work with the students that are in out-of-district. They have that expertise. We know those students tend to be the most complex. We'll talk a little bit about the out-of-district population in a little bit. But it might impact vertical articulation, given the coordinators can only follow students for a finite amount of time. So again, it's, it's a trade-off. Another model is, again, the campus model, where there are five campuses and feeder areas, where one coordinator follows that, that student throughout their school career. And again, it allows for excellent vertical articulation, because that coordinator follows that same child from preschool all the way till it's time for them to graduate. The disadvantages, the model requires expertise spanning pre-K through high school. And again, that's a lot to ask of any particular person. We know that special ed's complex. Each student is different. IEPs are individualized. And for one person to be asked to have all those skill sets, all those capacities, to follow those different sets of categories is asking a lot. So we talked about further codifying the entrance and exit guidelines for speech and language. Again, it was mentioned, and that is true. The Connecticut has one of the best state guidelines. It, it talks about 1.5 standard deviations. It's got wonderful resources. What the Connecticut guideline doesn't necessarily do is talk about speech and language in terms of literacy, phonemic awareness, story grammar, all those things that could be speech and language, but it also could be academics. They also don't necessarily talk about different guidelines for service delivery minutes. Again, so we think that Connecticut is a wonderful start, but it can be modified, and there's nothing to say in the guidelines that districts can't take that document and modify it to meet, to meet its needs. Please.
Just in terms of process, we, we very frequently encounter districts where we're working where there either are no entry and exit guidelines in place that are being consistently applied, or they worked some up a long time ago and haven't revisited them in quite a while, and they get used sporadically. What we urge districts to do if they decide to enhance their entry and exit criteria is to bring key stakeholders together, so that if, for example, you were working with speech-language pathologists, for example, to have them as a part of that process, starting in your case with the Connecticut guidelines, and then enhancing those at district discretion, so that it's a participatory process, and that when the guidelines are finalized, everybody's on the same page.
Thank you, John. As part of the long-term strategic plan, the district might consider bringing the occupational therapy services in-house, because right now, it is contracted, and we believe it could be done, done much more economically and efficiently, especially with a blended certified assistant model. Certified occupational therapy assistants are recognized in Connecticut. They are recognized Medicaid billers. And again, when it's done thoughtfully, and that's our, our position in terms of all assistant certified models, is that there are some students with complex needs that might have, be students on the autism spectrum, that might have augmentative needs, that might have chewing or swallowing needs. Those are ones that we want the certified master's level plus clinicians working with. But then we have another classified, or class of students that might be appropriate for assistance, students with more articulation needs on the speech and language side, or, you know, handwriting in occupational therapy. So we believe that the certified assistant model, given the reality of, of the workplace, can be an effective model, but it has to be done thoughtfully. Consider establishing school-based special education parent-teacher associations. This is something John and I come across quite a bit, that, and we commend that the district has a centrally-based SEPTA. Some districts don't even have that. It's hard to get parents. We know this is a very invested community. But it's our experience that parents have a great connection to their school. They have a connection to the district, but they have a particular connection to their neighborhood schools. So the degree that that SEPTA model can be either rotated through the schools, or it's built capacity at the school level so parents have that connection for that special education at the school level, not just at the district level, might be a consideration. I'm not sure, John, if, if you want to add to that, but that certainly has been our experience, that, that local connectivity.
Exactly. The, the more it can be perceived, thank you. The more that this can be perceived as a school-based and welcoming at the local level, our experience has been, more parents will tend to be comfortable in being engaged.
So before I move on to the next section, which is our continuum of supports, and I know we've gone through a lot of information, there's a lot to digest, we would maybe just like to throw it open to the board if there are any particular questions of that section before we move on. We're happy to field any questions.
Before you move on, I have a question. Of the 216 participants, how many were parents?
Eight.
Eight. And the models, the three different models that you presented, we were talking about, let me go back. You know, how are these models different to the current PPT process that we already have, where everyone who's in the PPT, including the parent, works with the child individually, understands the child's strengths and weaknesses, talking about having specific staff and, and training those staff to understand and be consistent on the services that they're giving the child. But my concern as a parent is that they won't know the child as well. And so maybe they're not seeing the needs exactly.
Do you mind if I take a stab at responding to that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So your concern is, is a good one. And we all know that at PPTs, we make individual decisions based on the needs of the individual child. However, what, what I noticed when I first got here, and I think in, in talking with staff, and I think having the EPFs to support the principals in terms of administering special ed programming and 504 programming at the elementary levels is going to add consistency in terms of delivery of service across the district. So it doesn't matter which one of the 11 schools, elementary schools you go to. You're going to receive the same program based on your needs that you would at Burr, or you would at Holland Hill, or any of our schools. In this audit, what's gotten me thinking, and in talking to really our high school people, there's a lot of people involved in facilitating PPTs at the high school that, like our, our colleagues here said, sometimes can compromise the integrity of your decision-making, or the consistency of your, of decision-making based on who the facilitator is. So with ongoing training by me and oversight by our coordinators, we're hoping to have that same effect in terms of consistency of programming for students regardless of what school they attend throughout the district.
So I would hope that if that, if one of these models is where you're going, that whoever the coordinators are, whichever the hybrid model, they would take the recommendation of the team that's actually working with the child, rather than the team fearing what they should say to this now coordinator.
The coordinator is a part of that team and works with the team and the family, most importantly, to develop an appropriate IEP. Absolutely. That's what we're about.
Well, I'd hope so.
Can I just follow up on?
Can I just follow up one question to what Ms. Picko was saying? I know that the focus on, from her question, was regarding the coordinator. My concern also had been with that, I mean, I see you say teacher across, and I assume obviously whoever their sped monitor, I don't know the term that Fairfield uses for that. But my concern obviously is that with some of those PPTs taking a long time, that means they're not in the classroom servicing the other children on their caseload. And how do any of these models address that?
Sure, and it's a fair point. I think you saw a teacher, let me see.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah. That's an evaluator.
Do you mind if I answer that question?
Whomever, sure.
What I will say is, part of facilitating a good PPT is, a good PPT you should be able to, you know, facilitate within 60 minutes, quite honestly. Maybe a more involved PPT where you're reviewing several evaluations should not take more than 90 minutes. There are certainly exceptions, but by having trained people who consistently facilitate PPTs, you're going to limit the time that people are out of the classroom. And I also think that we're considering some of these models that they've offered up for consideration in terms of developing evaluation teams. That will free up everybody in terms, other than your core evaluation team members, who that would be their job, to evaluate students, to determine a special education eligibility, to develop the IEPs in collaboration with the team that would be implementing the IEP. But everybody else, other than the evaluation team members, would no longer be doing any of that, you know, planning to find time to test the kid, test the student, write the score of the results, write the report, determine what the appropriate goals and objectives are, and so forth.
So that would all be done?
By your evaluation team.
And so this is a valuation team that's doing just that?
That would be their sole job, is, they would be evaluating students.
If I could just offer, you're hitting on one of the perennial issues since the beginning of special education, striking that balance, you know, and you can say all you want about, well, you have to think of it as an investment, that lost time, but we all lament it, and that is one of the potential advantages of a diagnostic team model, so that you've got people doing a good portion of that work, who, that is their job. They're not going to be pulled away from students.
No, but obviously, there's still the issue in that PPT of having the professionals who know the student.
The key people, exactly.
I mean, you can be a professional goal writer, but you've got to know the student to have that personalized to that child.
Right.
That's where having a good PPT facilitator who has a set agenda, and can stay focused, and get the work of the PPT done. So, you're not in a PPT for three hours, three and a half hours, because then it doesn't become productive.
Coincidentally, I was a director in a district of 10,000, and chaired a couple thousand, in my state, they call them CSE meetings, your PPTs. And by doing the kind of upfront work that this model would enable, we were able to scale back the actual time in meetings dramatically. I would say we cut it by two-thirds. We could do most meetings in about 30 minutes, after a couple of years of getting our act together and making sure that all the communications with parents were accomplished upfront, so there were no, people had a common understanding of where we were trying to go, and everybody...
But it was still done as a team. This isn't the team working offsite and then roping in the parent and saying, right.
Oh, no, no.
Because again, obviously then ultimately staffing, I would want to, and I'm sure this will come up ultimately in our budget discussions, how does doing what you're describing, I can't even conceive of a 30-minute PPT, but that's awfully appealing. What exactly this is going to change in terms of the staffing as we currently do it in Fairfield? But I assume that's part of a future discussion.
Yes, yes.
Before we go to Ms. Picko, does anybody else have questions? Ms. Lieber?
I was just going to be another voice for us. So I was essentially a PPT coordinator, CES coordinator, in New York City. And we just scheduled the whole process differently, so that the people who directly were involved with the students created the goals. And then we met with families, not in the middle of the school day, but we did it after school, so that we weren't taking teachers and related service providers away from direct services with children, and that when we had our PPT meetings, they were 30 minutes. So it was a totally different model, but I would imagine all in time spent actually was less, and you're taking less children, less time away from direct services for children. And that's like a totally different model, and a totally different discussion for another day, but I think if we're really thinking about changing our continuum supports and how we're doing this, it's something to explore. Just going to throw it out there.
One of the great things about this conversation, and I would suggest as a district, as you contemplate where you do go from this point forward, is to not lose sight of that protection of direct service time. That's a commendable goal.
And I will say, I worked in a district previously where we regularly did PPTs before school or after school, so it did not interfere with a student day.
Ms. Jacobson, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Going back to the pieces of information where you compared DRGA and B in Fairfield Public Schools in terms of our staffing and our financing of special education, my first question is, when you averaged the DRGB, was Fairfield Public Schools included in that, or did you pull us out?
They're pulled out.
They're pulled out, okay. So DRGA, as we know, has nine small, you know, pretty homogeneous communities, and DRGB is 21, very diver, so it's, I'm not a really law of averages type of girl, because it hides me the high and the low, right? I want to know what the range is. When you were, do you have that raw data by town?
We do.
Is it possible for us to get, not now, but can we possibly, maybe through Dr. Jones or something, at some point, get the actuals on those communities in A and B? Because I'd like to see exactly where we're coming in on that. And the second question is, for driving question number four, and, you know, we'll see how you handle it, my question is, you know, the question was, is the district expending adequate financial resources towards its special education? And we didn't really get an answer in that question. It was more where we lay between A and B, and again, doesn't truly tell me anything. So, is there an answer to that question, in your opinion? Just because we lay between A and B, maybe, that doesn't tell me if it's adequate to meet the needs of our students, you know what I'm saying?
That's a fair point. I think when we get to student outcomes, graduation, achievement gap, that's a philosophical question, to the degree that kids are succeeding. And I think to the degree that kids are succeeding, we can say that the expenditures are meeting the needs, if that makes sense, it's somewhat circular.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Picko, did you have a question about what's been covered?
So I had a couple more questions on different topics. First, in the original report we got in September, there was that reference to the impact of old-school thinking, which is now not in the presentation we're looking at here. So in terms of this organization, what do you see that impacting, or is there a reason that it's not part of what we're discussing here today?
Sure. The purpose of tonight is to present an overview. So, we hope to present an overview with tonight. So there's a lot of things that didn't make the, that are on the cutting room floor from the report to this PowerPoint, because this is meant to be a 35,000-foot view. What we're saying is, these are the trends. Is there some vestiges of not-my-kid-thinking? Yes, and we see that everywhere. But in general, what we're seeing is a healthy culture, and that's how we're reporting it.
Okay. Second, this is more to Mr. Mancusi, that this whole idea that now that we have these elementary school facilitators, I assume part of what these full-day PDs will be, will be them getting together exactly for that consistency, that that's part of their directive mission of this year.
The group meets monthly, and has set agenda items, and special education is always on that.
Okay. Hold on, sorry, I thought I had one other one.
Is your question on what's been presented so far, or could we wait?
Sorry, my final question was regarding all of those models, I don't see guidance counselors. And a lot of the PPTs I've sat in had not only the other related services, the, you know, speed, whomever, but in terms of keeping tabs of the whole child, I've never been in one that didn't have the guidance, now that's high school experience. But is there a reason that's not part of these models?
Sure. So, it's a very fair question. If you look at that last, in the others as needed, so let's say there's a student on the spectrum that needs occupational therapy, they would be part of those core teams. What we're identifying there is really the core team members that are involved in most annuals or triennial reviews. The thought is that there's the core team, but other professionals, like a guidance counselor, if they're needed, would be part of that diagnostic team.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to say a word about your comment about the vestiges of the your-kid-my-kid thinking. We've partnered now with over 300 districts around the country. I can't off the top of my head recall a district where there was 100% ownership, and I don't say that in a critical way. When you think about the fact, this is my 48th year in education. When I started, we were still excluding children from public schools because of disabilities. And through litigation and parent advocacy and a lot of hard work, we started special education in public schools as a segregated, separate environment, with the best of intentions. It's been a long, slow learning curve, but it's bending in the right direction. We still have folks who think, you know, when you say inclusion, for the first 20 years of my career, we told people, send us your children with disabilities, we're the special educators, and then we whipsawed people. We turned around and said inclusion, and scared the heck out of people, to put it bluntly. You know, I'm not a special educator. So, when we note that there are still some vestiges, that is typical of virtually every district with whom we partner, and it's understandable. The fact is, you have come a long way in that evolution as a district, and based on our experiences in all of those different districts, you're in pretty good shape. You're not 100%, but you're doing very well in terms of creating a welcoming and effective environment for your students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Picko?
Dr. Knoman and Dr. McGuire, if you could help me to understand a 30-minute or an hour-long PPT, what that looks like, because I have to be honest, as an educator for 12 to 13 years, sitting on one side of the table, working with one of my students in a PPT versus being a parent, I've never seen one under an hour. I have to be really clear when I say, like, even in the middle school and high school level, you invite the child down to go over their goals, to talk to them. In an elementary school level, you work, you go around the table and talk about, you know, the child's goals, or strengths or weaknesses. How is that going to happen in less than an hour? I mean, unless you're constantly talking to every teacher and therapist this child has outside of the PPT.
Well, first of all, let me tell you, it didn't happen day one, okay? It couldn't, because we had to educate every participant in the system, and that included the parents. So that it was understood that the actual, in our case, CSE meetings, were formalizations, confirmations, if you will, of what was already resolved, so that the work was done upfront. We had too many identified students to actually conduct brainstorming sessions in our CSE meetings. We couldn't have gotten through them in the school year, and we had to do something. So what we did was, we set up a process by which there was communication among the key team members. There was communication coming out of that communication with the parents, so that by the time we scheduled the meeting, people were on board. And every single meeting, after the actions were taken, I would turn to the parents and say, do you have any other questions, and is this consistent with your understandings prior to the meeting? I got yes every time, because our people were very good. We built very positive trusting relationships with our parents, and we worked hand-in-hand with them. Many of our parents who moved in from other districts after the first meeting would look at me and say, is that, is that it? I said, unless you have some other question. And they walked out saying things like, we were used to having two-hour meetings and walking out unresolved. Well, that's an incredible waste. You want to talk about loss of direct time? Oh my God, you can't do that. So, that's how we did it. It was a formalization, everybody was on board, and we made absolutely certain that that included the parent.
Okay, why don't we move on?
Okay. So now we're on to continuum of supports, again, looking at the programmatic considerations. So, across many comparative parameters, students in preschool are really demonstrating some excellent outcomes. Again, IDA indicators, there are, one's specific to preschool, positive social-emotional skills, again, these are percentage of students that are functioning with age expectations by the time they exit the program, appropriate behaviors to meet needs, and use of knowledge of skills, and you can see the percentage of students with disabilities in Fairfield at the preschool level, how much, how well they are doing compared to the DRGA and the DRB districts.
Despite perceptions that your SRBI is a quote "work in progress" unquote, which by the way, puts you in league with virtually every other school district in America, the district has invested a great deal of resource in improving the process. These data suggest that the early intervening services are working well, and this simply shows your percentages of low-needs, high-incidence disabilities, speech-language, specific learning disabilities, and other health impaired, you are at or below your reference groups.
And if I can talk just a second, why that's a sensitive metric. When we think about the disability categories, there are some students with what we would call high-needs, low-incidence students on autism spectrum, multiple disabilities. These are students that obviously need an IEP. So, an SRBI or RTI process isn't really going to affect change, because these students truly have educational disabilities. These categories, speech-language impairment, learning disabilities, other health impairment, those are the high incidence, low needs, that if SRBI isn't working well, might come out as showing a district having a higher percentage of these, again, because they truly aren't disabled. The early intervening process, the SRBI didn't intervene adequately, if that makes sense. That's why we do a deeper dive than just looking at the special ed population, to really look at those categories.
One of the issues we're forever wrestling with in our profession is the achievement gap between students with disabilities and non-disabled peers. We're looking at the achievement gap here in ELA and math. You are comparable in ELA with your reference groups, and the gap in math is less than that of other reference group, school districts. That's encouraging data. You know, we were always asking as a part of our interview protocols, what ideas do you have to close the achievement gap? And knowing full well that nobody has the quick answer, there's no silver bullet for this one. And a strange phenomenon that occurred a couple of years ago in a district we were working with, the achievement gap was very, very low, but they were over-identifying. They had way, way, way too many kids identified in their school district, many of whom were above-average academic students. So the achievement gap was pretty small, for all the wrong reasons. So, at this point, your trends are encouraging.
So we talked about the IP review, we talked about, one of the methodologies was to look at 100 stratified random IEPs across schools and across disabilities, again, where we saw some really excellent IEPs, because there's no special ed curriculum, special ed curriculum really doesn't exist. It's, special ed helps students with disabilities achieve the same general level, general ed standards as students without disabilities, unless that's small percentage of students that it might be alt-assessment. So again, we looked at that explicit linkage of goals to grade-level expectations. This is not unique. Every district we've been has had sort of the final frontier of goal writing, and I'm an SLP, I know it's a challenge, to write a measurable, connected IEP. So we saw some excellence, and we saw some needs. Again, this is just something that... and we saw some needs. Again, this is just something that, that is, needs constant attention, both at, at the instructional level, also at the PPT level, the principal level. Everyone kind of doing checks and balances and quality assurance at that, for that IEP process. John, you want to talk about the co-teaching?
The district is doing extremely well with respect to keeping students in general education, as I showed you in that earlier graph, for 80% or more of the day. It may be somewhat misleading to the degree that pure co-teaching models are not occurring as much as staff might prefer and as you might prefer. And you'll see later in our opportunities that we'll talk to the continued enhancement of integrated co-teaching models to support inclusion of students.
The graduation, again, is quite solid. When we think about special education levels the playing field, it helps students with disabilities achieve the same standards as students without disabilities. A huge piece of that is the graduation rate. And we can see that 80.4% for the special education cohort is higher by comparison to the DURG averages 57. It really has trended up. That was really a bump. When you look at the trend line, that graduation rate has continued to decline. And Rob, we know that the procedures, if you want to talk?
And that's a four-year cohort figure. So, we all also are looking at our five, our five and six-year cohort, cohort data. And, you know, this has been a conversation that we've been having with our high school colleagues about graduation, because it's something that parents, parents are interested in.
As mentioned earlier, we try to report factually and objectively, but this particular bullet and my bias merits commendation. Respondents expressed that staff make significant efforts to serve students with disabilities within the district, and that every effort was put forth in attempts to avoid placing students in out-of-district programs. Currently, 5% of the district's students with disabilities are in out-of-district programs as part of the PPT process, which is within expectation and in fact, is quite excellent in our experience.
Right. And if I could do, we did a little deeper dive than just the percentage. We looked at the grades and the disabilities. Typically, these are students sort of sixth grade and above, is sort of the bewitching hour for students that tend to need out-of-district placements. They're just something, you know, at the secondary level, that they might need that extra, extra support where the school, the district programs aren't meeting their needs. So, again, we saw something very consistent. It typically is students at the secondary level that are requiring these, and students with a behavioral component. The majority, the plurality of students had emotional disability. And of students that didn't have the emotional disability, let's say, OHI, there was a behavioral component to that. So, that is to say, most of the students that are in out-of-district placements have a behavioral component to their IEP. That's why they're placed.
About 30% of your students who are in out-of-district placements are there as a result of settlement agreements, which is high in our experience. With respect to budgetary considerations, though, the district is allocating approximately $9.4 million before excess cost reimbursements toward out-of-district programs. 2.4 million of that is attached to settlement agreements. However, the overall cost is about $95,000 per student, which is lower by comparison with your reference groups A and B.
Rob?
If I could just comment on that, one of the things, you know, moving down to Fairfield County to work is a lot different than working up in, in New Haven County where I came from in terms of the number of settlement agreements. So, I do belong to a Fairfield County Directors' Group, and I frequently, we talk about settlement agreements, the amount of settlement agreements. We are not an outlier to all of our DURG A counterparts that we're, that we're surrounded by in terms of settlement agreements or entering into settlement agreements with parents. What we've been able to do is we've been able to save, what I believe, a significant amount of money, but more importantly, we've been able to save relationships with families that we're going to be working with for, in some cases, at least 10 years. So, settlement agreements are entered into on a case-by-case basis. We weigh the district's exposure in terms of if, if we wanted to defend our program and due process. But really where we are in settlement agreements is we're really into preserving our relationships with parents or students with disabilities, who we have a long, long relationship to go.
I can only second that observation based on years of dealing with procedural due process, mediation, and settlements. Any good counsel will advise you to settle. Make it a win-win. You will save not only the dollars, but as Rob is saying, the relationships, which are so essential. When you continue to work on your SRBI, your tiered sets of interventions, both academically and behaviorally, this is a best practice that we ran into in the Midwest a couple years back. You may want to consider that these interventions can not only be effective as upfront preventative interventions, but can provide a safety net for students who are being declassified from special education. And the fringe benefit of that is, it is tremendously reassuring to key stakeholders, for example, parents, who may very well wonder if, while we're happy about the declassification, are we in fact pulling out the very supports that are enabling my child's success? So, we commend this for your consideration. Other areas of opportunity, this is just forever and for always. I mean, even if we hadn't done the data gathering that we've done, I would be comfortable making this recommendation. Continued development on IEP writing is a never-ending need. And that's not to, in any way, demean the staff who are writing IEPs. Things change. And it's important to be very current and to have the best possible cutting-edge skills in developing those IEPs. Continue to focus on ensuring co-teaching that it remains a viable option within your continuum of services, as we mentioned earlier. To supplement the successes with inclusion at your high schools, you may want to consider establishing a credit-bearing peer mentorship program at the secondary level. And also to continue to reflect on bring-back, keep-in options for students with disabilities. If there are patterns, cohorts that are emerging in your students who are finding their ways into out-of-district placements, what would the capacity building be that would, would enable you to meet those needs in-house? It's, it's an ongoing reflective practice that has served many of our partner districts very well.
So, in summary, except for the report, that, again, there was a lot to like about the district, many celebrations. And we can be tough creators. We don't say that, you know, without reflection on our end. There's clearly a lot to like in this district. A lot of things are really working well for kids. With that said, like any district that is reflective, as part of its strategic plan, there are ways perhaps the district can move forward in a, in a better way. And again, we break these things down in the summary, just as we did the report. Under organizational considerations, we talked about reorganizing the administrative structure within the Special Education Department with those different models, creating that central diagnostic team to equalize access to services, and again, to improve vertical articulation. Those programs continue to follow the students as they go from grade to grade, school to school. To develop a long-range plan to utilize the specials in speech, language, pathology, and occupational therapy in a more effective and efficient manner, in view of what's happening now for current needs and prospective needs. My wife works in early intervention in Massachusetts. The amount of students coming up through the system from birth to three, it's, it's, it's really taxing the system. We know these students are going to be going from the IFSP to the IEP. These are where we're going to need your, your service providers. And that's another reason why John and I are somewhat agnostic about the staffing models. That could very much be a celebration to talk about, you know, the ways to, to meet the needs of not students in, in the district right now, but ones are coming that will be graduating from early intervention services. Under continuum of services, as John said, continue to make co-teaching a featured aspect of the continuum. Right now, co-teaching is happening, but it's sporadic. It's really up to the dyads and perhaps the personalities in the schools. We believe in co-teaching works well. It's a beautiful model, but has to be embraced as a systemic model. And again, revisit the out-of-district placements with respect to the numbers of sites. And again, I, again, I'll use the phrase again, bringing Colt to Newcastle. This is a district that does very well keeping students in with culture, with climate, with programs, being reflective. But again, it is, it is a way for continued reflection to meet the needs of students within their least restrictive environment. All things being equal, it is their, it is their neighborhood or their district schools. So, that is the overview of our study. And again, we will open it up to questions and discussion.
I will open it up for any further questions. And I'm going to ask that board members just really focus questions for our presenters and on the presentation. I know that a lot of information was presented. I don't want this going into a future of special education in Fairfield Public Schools, because we will be here probably for the next week if we start that discussion right now. So, I open up the floor to anyone who has any additional questions for our presenters. Ms. Pico?
I just want to say that I sent questions, and I believe they can go to Mr. Manquosi. I don't need to ask any more questions of our presenters. Thank you.
Board member questions will be sent to all board members, either through Dr. Jones or myself tomorrow. I'm actually almost done with them. I just want to proof them before they go out.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I do, I was sent in questions early this morning. I apologize for that. And I know that some of my fellow board members were also, did not meet that, get your questions to us by last Wednesday. So, we will try to do better in the future on that. I'd like to thank our presenters coming for the presentation. You gave us a lot of information to think about. And I look forward to hearing more from Mr. Manquosi. Do you have any closing remarks that you would like to leave us with?
I would just like to thank Michael and his team for coming and giving us a lot of good information to discuss and review. We've begun as a team to discuss what we think would be appropriate to put into the budget. I would also like to just give a shout-out to our speech pathologists. We've tried, we've reviewed this with, you know, with the whole special ed department. We had two meetings. We invited them to the, to the auditorium at Fairfield Ward High School. That was a part of the, the audit that caught my attention immediately. And I was concerned that it was going to obviously catch their attention and, and somehow be, be looked at in a threatening or negative manner. I have the utmost respect for the profession. I'm married to a speech pathologist. I think they provide an amazing, invaluable service to our students, both students with disabilities and, and non-disabled peers. And I look forward to working with them moving forward to service our students. We realize we have IEPs to meet, so we look forward to working with our 30.5 FTE to meet the needs of our students.
Ms. Lepert, do you have a question?
I also am guilty of submitting several late, and I do apologize. I have, I'm not going to ask all of the questions. I have just a couple. And I'll try to pick the ones that maybe are best for, for our guests. So, and I wrote these questions based on the analysis that you guys did for us. So, I have page numbers, which maybe are not helpful considering the presentation. But you mentioned that the average service minutes per week of 64 is excessive and warrants attention, especially with respect to preschool population. And I was wondering what the comparison group was for that statement? Because if that 64 minutes is talking about our ECC, I would imagine a comparison group of normally distributed students might not be an appropriate comparison group. And so, I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that.
That's fair. And Rick's probably could have, should have worded it, worded it differently. Our work, besides New York, is a pre-K through 12. So, it is apples to apples. And that 45 minutes I mentioned in the bell-shaped distribution is based empirically on our database, including preschool. When I mentioned the 64, it almost should have been two different phrases. The average 64 is high, especially in reference to the preschool numbers. And again, our purpose here is not to reveal any student. And I'm, I don't want to say too much, because that might inadvertently reveal a student that we might be talking about. But the preschool itself is a different bell-shaped distribution that is way over here on the right. It's not 64. It's much, much more than that.
Yeah. Okay. And so, the 64 is including, though?
Everybody, pre-K through 12.
Did we get a number that did not include our preschool, by any chance? So, like, a K to 12 number? Because I'd imagine that average would be really different. Because our ECC likely skews our average.
It most certainly does. But again, so we can do that, because our bell-shaped distribution is based on a pre-K through 12 sample. We can certainly break that out, and I'm happy to provide, again, that to Mr. Manquosi down the road for descriptive purposes. But again, because we're trying to look at industry averages, by covaring out the preschool, we would totally invalidate that comparison.
Do other districts have preschools that are similar to Fairfield's ECC?
Yes. In terms of the population served, it might not be the same model or the same location, but it's the same, it's the same population served. And then when we look at the disability categories, it's not appreciably different.
Okay. My understanding was just that our ECC was not actually having a 50/50 ratio right now. So, we actually might be even more so overweighted than what it was designed to be and what maybe comparable districts would be, but...
That's a fair point. But just keep in mind, if it's not a 50/50 ratio of gen ed, typical peers to students, we're still only evaluating students with disabilities in the other districts.
That's fair. And I'm wondering if you could speak to how other districts structure their staff's indirect workload. So, this is more like a caseload versus workload question. And I don't know if this is better for Mr. Manquosi or for you two, but the chart shows that our staff has larger-than-average caseloads. But I'm also wondering if the effect could actually be even greater than that, because our staff is also responsible for all of their own indirect work. I'm sorry if indirect work is actually not the right word, but you know what I mean. Not direct service to children, but writing goals, meeting with families, and all of the other things that go along with preparing for direct services. And that, if other districts have a different model for how they proportion that less direct service work of their related service providers.
Yeah. If I'm...
I asked that in a very confusing way. I apologize.
And I hope, I hope, no, I think I'm understanding. So, when we, when we compared the disciplines, and again, you'll see that in the appendices, the direct service time, that's operationally defined as time spent meeting IEPs. It's actually quite good. It's, for want of a better word, I hate to use the word productivity, because that, that sounds like a medical model. But the staff is, has a high proportion of direct services. So, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the question about how the indirect is managed. It's part of the overall workload expectation.
So, if our staff has to spend 78% of their time in direct service, because that's what their caseload demands, but we know that it takes somebody 35% of their time to do all the rest, now we're over 100% of their time. And that might be eating into actually their direct service, because they have to go to PPTs and do all these other things.
Great point.
And that's a compliance question, I guess.
No. Excellent question. So, let's take OT as the example. They were 78% direct service. That's really high. Where's all that time going? It must be stretched. Yes. But 78% of their time is spent individual. So, what if they could be more efficient with groupings? Then that 78% time is mitigated, because now they have more time to manage the other parts of their workload.
One of the things we're interested in having a discussion about is just... One of the things we're interested in having a discussion about is just what Michael said. Look at opportunities for kids to have access to more kids more often. So, maybe some students with disabilities with significant communication needs can be grouped instead of having one-to-one service. Or they can get the service in the classroom versus in a pull-out setting.
But those are changes that can't really be made until the next PPT. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, you got to make IEP revisions to do those things. But they certainly can be things that like moving forward, you know, we can discuss.
Okay. Ms. Max Canelli?
So, Mr. Manquosi, I will be sending the questions that I have that are specific only to you. I'll hold on those and send those in because the presentation didn't answer them. But so, to just our presenters, when you talk about the co-teaching model, again, I'm interested in what you've seen in other districts, which is why I'm asking you this. Is it that you're seeing that by virtue of having additional levels in secondary ed, that that's where they put that co-teaching model in? Or is it with similar class structures, they simply have more co-teaching models? How do you see that played out in terms of, I mean, you're commenting that ours is inconsistent? That it's something to look at? How is it done?
It's a fair point. And I'm about to defer to John because he just finished a three-year embedded coaching and mentoring project in Texas on this very thing. So, John?
We just had the pleasure of putting integrated co-teaching in 30 schools of a 30,000 student district outside of Dallas. And that's what Michael's referencing. And clearly, the model varies according to levels, as you would expect. If your question is specific to the secondary, we've seen it done departmentally, if you will, so that perhaps what are referred to as the core courses are offered on a co-taught model. And the key element here is the professional development of the people providing the co-teaching, both the generalist and the specialist together. So, they are fluid in their understanding and their implementation of the various, the six variations on the theme of co-teaching, if you will. Too often, we've seen districts decide that they, you know, we're aware of co-teaching. We think it's a good thing. But in the absence of the professional development, what you tend to wind up with is, you know, what do we know from our experience? One teaches, one assists, or one observes, and then they switch roles. Well, that's a valid use of co-teaching for maybe about 10% of the time. So, we want to be sure that however you do it, if you're doing it departmentally at the secondary level, if you're doing it at grade levels at the elementary, what have you, that people are well schooled in it. We would also encourage keeping those partnerships together. It's like a marriage. It matures over time. We worked with one district in downstate New York where they were imbued with integrated co-teaching at the high school level, and they did a wonderful job of creating offerings. And when the teachers came back after year one in August to get ready for the opening of school, they found that their assignments had been switched up. It made sense conceptually. They were trying to grow the program. So, they said, okay, these two teachers have experience with it. Now, they can train two other teachers. Well, it really frustrated everyone, and we got them to see the light and say, no, you know, they're just hitting their stride. By the end of the second year, they are, they finish each other's thoughts. I mean, it's amazing to see.
But so, to my question, it works, you have seen it work well in districts with the type of leveling that we have in our high schools? Or, I mean, like, do you find that it works best with a certain leveling structure or that it works across different models of that? That's my question, reflective specifically of what Fairfield has compared with other districts that have rolled this out at the secondary level?
Is there anything in this model that you have, this leveling model that would preclude it? So, like AP or university and the high school kinds of offerings? I can't tell you that I've honestly seen, you know, college credit bearing courses, co-taught. I have not. So, I can't speak to that from experience. What I can say is that we have found, you know, people will often ask the question, what students with disabilities can be effectively served in integrated settings with co-teaching models? We worked in an urban district in the Midwest where they found that, well, their default model was every student in their home school, every student, which was a wonderful philosophy. And it worked for all but maybe 2% of their students and for whom they were developing special programs. The good news about that was that effectively implemented co-taught classes worked for way more students than they even anticipated. So, the answer really is, if it's done well, it can work for everybody.
Okay.
But I haven't seen it done with credit bearing, college credit bearing courses. I just haven't seen that.
Okay. That wasn't quite what I was getting at in terms of the AP courses, but I think you answered my question. A couple of other questions. When you talk, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. When you say that 5% of our out-of-district is done through the PPT process, well, that leaves 95% not. You're saying 30% of them are settle agreements. So, is that, and so, again, my question to the presenters is that, are you telling me that it is typical that 65% of out-of placement are the result of unilateral placements?
I don't, I'm sorry. That's, so of the 100%?
Yeah.
So, that 5%, we pull out, now it becomes 100% of out-of district placements.
Right.
Of that 100%, a portion of that?
So, the 5% was of your?
Of the overall special ed population.
Okay. All right. Now, that, thank you very much. That's a very, very different, that had me rather alarmed. I always think we need to triple our legal costs, if that's what you're telling me.
So glad you asked that question.
Okay. And then, thank you. A few of your areas of opportunity, excuse me, were frustratingly vague. So, I didn't know if there was more that you could add about something like when you talk about continue to focus on bringing students back who had out-of district. Did you have, you know, to promote personnel physical plant, physical capacities, did you notice any consistent trends about an area that we as a board can focus on that that would be something to add to our district, to make a budgetary commitment to? And I'll give you an example. We've done that with the CLCs. Is there another thing that your audit surfaced as this is something we can do, there's a substantial body of students that we could better serve?
What I will say is, we're already doing it. About 40% of our PPT placed, outplaced students are students who have emotional challenges, behavioral challenges. So, you know, last year, the board supported, you know, the development of impact. And we're putting a lot of resources into meeting the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students with disabilities. And I will say, this year, particularly at the middle school and high school level, John Goodison and Mike DiStefano have done a superb job at working with families to kind of plan programming to enter back into the Fairfield Public Schools. And we continue to do that.
Okay. I was also glad that when you were talking about the efficiency of the groupings, that our folk, obviously, the point of the audit was to try to find some efficiencies. That was very much part of the genesis of it. But obviously, not groupings for the sake of groupings. You know, there are students, yes, the schedules may work that they're together getting served, but obviously, it is not your recommendation that, well, because they need speech service and they have a good schedule that works well, that they should be placed together. That that's, it's not your recommendation that they just be placed. They need like, they have like needs.
We would never recommend grouping if it does not meet the child's needs. However, it can be a great, it can be an efficient model. And I'll also be very effective, as Mr. Manquosi said, you've got students that can be each other's peer models. So, again, there's some students that need to be sent individually. That's their, the best model because that's how they access the IP. But there are other models that are both effective and efficient, not mutually exclusive.
And you're 100% correct. You would not want to group students who don't have similar needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Last question?
Wasn't going to, but I really want to piggyback on what Mrs. Max and Canelli was saying. It sounds like our presenters have been in multiple states. And I'm wondering if you have come across any models or services that would work for our students? I've been on the board for a few years now, and we originally had behavioral health services through a company. I'm wondering if there was anything that you see that was highly effective in another state, in another district?
It's a pretty broad question. There are, there are no secrets in special ed. I mean, we know cutting-edge best practice. That's why we tend to be advocates for integrated co-taught programming done well, for example. But in terms of a best practice, and we alluded to it in part in this presentation tonight, we really do urge districts to have clearly articulated written guidelines for service eligibility and exit criteria, including the programs, including the related services, including paraprofessional supports, so that there is consistency and equity. And it's not just, you know, because we're hammer-headed administrators. It's because the district is placed essentially in an indefensible position if you wind up with erratic patterns coming out. And we're not here to second guess the decisions of your PPT. That's not our role. We respect what they go through to arrive at their IEP decisions. But consistency, when I say that, it's code for equity, you know? And you just don't want to be in a position where you're challenged, wondering why this child got five times a week of a service in this individually, and a child with somewhat similar needs wound up with twice a week in a small group. It's a hard place to be unless you have some guidelines to point to that say, based on the assessment data and the anecdotal information, the child fit this level of service. And also to remind everybody involved that any unnecessary related service robs a child of instructional time, which is our mission.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manquosi, you are, the floor is still yours. Oh, I take that back. I'm sorry. You have a little bit of a break. We're moving on to, we're moving on to policy, adoption of policies 5144.1 and 5125. The recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 5144.1, students' use of physical force, and policy 5125, student records confidentiality. Kind of motion? Mrs. Gerber, second. Ms. Max Canelli? Ms. Max Canelli, do you have anything to add before?
No. The only question I received was regarding the second of the two policies for confidentiality, which I responded to with Ms. Leeper. I hope it satisfied that it addressed your concern.
Is it a policy by state statute that it has to be a policy and not remain a reg?
That was not my understanding that that's what was your question.
That wasn't, your response was the reg?
Right.
And is it formalized with policy because we had to? Or?
The change was driven by staff request.
Okay.
The presence, the fact that a policy exists at all is not what I was responding to. So, is, so that I misunderstood your question?
You answered my question, and I guess this is my follow-up question. So?
Okay. So, I can't speak to exactly beyond what all of these statute, which you did reference the lengthy list.
Yeah.
So, I did not go through them. I don't know if you'd like me to ask Ms. Deasy to come up and speak to that if she's still, if, so, let me just get that question addressed because that's obviously not what I responded So, Ms. Deasy, just to update you, initially, what I had said was responded to was the nature of why we made the changes, which was staff-driven. And then I pointed out that the general nature of the policy was done deliberately so that when there are changes as driven by numerous statutes, that it was done more fluidly and more quickly through the regs. But now, my understanding of the question is that, why do we have it at all?
Why do we have the policy at all and not just a regulation? Is that your question? Because every regulation has to be attached to a policy. So, that's why the policy is so short and the regulation is so long. It's because it's really just the hook for us to have the regulation in the first place.
That wasn't my understanding of your question either. So, I still didn't understand the question. Sorry about that. And then, use of physical force. I got no questions on, so just if the board does have any now.
Any questions? Okay. This is a voting item. We'll go to the public. Any members of the public would like to speak to this? Okay. Back to the board. So, the recommended motion, the Board of Education adopt policy 5144.1, students' use of physical force, and policy 5125, student records confidentiality. All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. Moving on to the approval of the 2019-2020 Fairfield Public Schools Student Calendar. Recommended motion, that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Fairfield Public Schools' public calendar. Kind of a motion? Mr. Dwyer, second. Mrs. Gerber. Dr. Jones?
Okay. So, we made several changes based on the input from the Board of Education at our last meeting. If you look at October, we did greatly reduce the number of early release. We moved our professional day, just for staff, into September, where you'll see it on September 24th. And the previous calendar, there was not, there was not an early release in September. What we've done in October is given a full day on the 15th, which equates to two half days because they take three sessions in order to get through conferences. And then, the 16th is a half-day early release. And the 16th is also PSAT for high schools, so we're very committed to that date. The reason we put the full day on the 15th instead of the 17th is because the 15th is also a Tuesday, which is an extended day for staff. So, it makes a better conference day for teachers. We did look at moving the early releases and restructuring November. But when you look at November, it just made November look worse than the October we started with because we don't have complete weeks. What that full day does do on the 15th is extend the calendar one day because you can't count that full day as an instructional day. The other change that was made at the request of the board was to take off the early release on May the 22nd. So, those highlight the changes.
Mr. Peterson, follow-up, Mr. Asa?
First, a general comment. I want to thank you for changing President's Day to Washington's birthday. I know I say a lot of ridiculous things, but I do actually think we should call things what they're called. Dr. Jones, you mentioned in your communication to us in terms of, I appreciate the collapsing of the half-days in October, and you said that wasn't possible in March. Could you expand on that?
Well, we could actually do something in March if we want to extend the calendar another day. And so, I was taking all of the different variations of your comments. And I know some of you didn't want to even see it extend one day. Certainly, we could do that, but it would take another full day.
Mr. Asa?
So, in October with the new version, is it to be understood that there's just one day where conferences will be offered in the evening?
Right now, with this calendar, it's, the conferences on the 15th are offered during the day, all day, and a little bit after school because it's an extended Tuesday. It doesn't go until like seven or eight o'clock at night.
In the previous calendar, it did that one, it did go into the evening?
No. In the previous calendar, we had three early releases. We didn't have evening.
But conferences, like I know, for example, you know, our conference was in the evening, so, or late afternoon, maybe?
I mean, it could be after school, like on the Tuesday, but not, we didn't have evening.
Okay.
Doesn't mean somebody didn't stay later for you, but, yeah. Teachers are great people.
Yes.
Any further questions, Mr. Asa? Or is that it?
No, let, I might have one more.
Okay. Yep.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to get clarification. Has that been a change with no evening conferences? Because I haven't had a childhood in elementary school for some years, but back in the day, not that long ago, there were two evenings, two sets of evening conferences. So, that has been done away with? There are no more evening conferences anymore?
I would have to ask somebody with more history than me.
Because my understand, I just, I recall they were quite hot properties, but the conferences went until eight o'clock at night because I remember oftentimes having them because my husband couldn't get home before then. So, I'm just a little perplexed. So I'm just a little perplexed, and there were two evenings.
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. There's, in our conference periods currently, there still is one evening conference in each of those conference periods.
So that would be in March, would have that?
We have them in the fall and in the spring.
Right, so that's my question then.
Not anymore.
But, but we're saying that moving forward, this October 15th, there will no, there will no longer be evening conferences for the fall.
On this calendar, there would not be, because you have a full day. You wouldn't have teachers work all day, and then also stay until eight o'clock at night. So what I'm, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood that myself. So if we're going to put back three early releases, that's what you're talking about.
Okay, well, I guess then my question would be then, looking at the original draft calendar that we received at our prior meeting, there were early dismissals for conferences on October 10th, October 16th, and October 17th. Were none of those evening conferences planned to be evening conferences either? I'm just trying to get a sense, like, did we get rid of evening conferences as a result of going to one full day? Or were there planned to be, in this original draft calendar from October, were any of these 10, 16, or 17 going to be evening conferences? And I guess I'm primarily talking about, I could, it'll be elementary and elementary school.
Well, I think I would have to ask Mr. Cummings to come forward for that, because I think I have, my understanding of what they were doing on those three days is obviously not what they were actually doing.
No, what we usually do after the calendar has been voted on and accepted by the Board, we designate, usually in the spring, what the evening conferences will be, the dates of the evening conferences. So we notify the schools around March or April, this will be the evening conference, for example, but that's after the Board has adopted the calendar.
What about October?
What about October?
We would do the same. We, that's how our practice is.
So there will be, I just, I want to get some clarification, because I think not having any evening conferences would be a real hardship for parents.
The possibility could exist that on the, on the Wednesday, I don't have my calendar right in front of me.
The 16th.
The 16th, that could be the evening conference.
Okay.
But again, we don't designate it on the calendar itself, we designate it later in the year.
Okay, but it just sounded at first as if there were going to be no evening conferences. I just wanted to clarify that there will still be the opportunity for parents in PK through eight to have an evening conference.
We recognize that, that's a need for parents, and we work to fill it.
Okay, great, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
And we will fix that on the calendar, because it should be noted on the calendar when we approve the calendar.
So my question has to do with March. There are three days in March. Will two of those days be evening conferences, one?
Our current practice is one of the, one of the days is an evening conference.
Okay, I'm, I gotta add, no more questions, I'm sorry. I originally stated my concern in October and March being so many days either off or half-days. And I understand the conversation and the emails that you sent. I still feel that March having four half-days is just too much and a huge burden on our parents, and less instructional time in March, when we're working on goals for our students.
I would advocate, and I think Mr. Schmoller spoke to that earlier, that we need the professional development time. I mean, when you listen to everything they're talking about tonight, you know, with this audit and all of the work that our teachers do and the collaboration time they need, we need those early releases. And there's, you know, when you look at the calendar, we have all kinds of holidays sprinkled throughout every month. And I think as an early release on, and that's the 10th, you'd be talking about on March 10th, it is needed.
It's not just the 10th, it's just any configuration. You're talking about you did it in October, but then it was not possible in March.
Well, it's possible if you want to extend the calendar, and if the Board chooses to say, let's go to the 17th. I just, the Board was mixed at our last meeting about not even wanting to go to the 16th. So certainly, we can make that a full day.
But if you remember, I was not in favor of May 26th. So for me, taking away May 26th to accommodate in March is much more beneficial for the students and the parents. That's just my opinion.
But we've contracted for May 26th. We have a day of professional development, that's part of the teacher's contract, that there is a full day of professional development. That's the one that used to be February 14th. And before that, I think it had been actually in January. We moved it to February to give parents a longer weekend, but then staff were looking to have a long weekend, so we moved it to May. But that May 26th has to happen somewhere, that's our contract.
And I'm not saying that it doesn't, I'm saying why can't it change to a different month? If we're trying to accommodate less half-days in March.
If you don't mind, if I may comment, though, I, I would really ask that the Board just acknowledge that this calendar has gone through our entire district leadership team. And they look at from every element, from pre-K through 12, because every developmental level is different. These are strategically placed when we need professional development. That's why we had one in October, we moved it to September, which actually, you know, the feedback is like, we think this might even be better. But we need, we need professional development throughout the year. You can't do it all clustered. It's like those three days in August, that's not professional development. I mean, most of that is getting your room ready, it's running around like, you know, crazy, just trying to be ready for the school year. So when you take those three days out, the November date and the May date, that's it for the two full days. We just, and our teachers are clamoring for professional development time. So they're really, it is difficult, I understand that for early releases, but I think we have to understand that the time is highly valuable and we need it.
Done, Mrs. Gerber?
Well, just, just one thing to keep in mind, is that March, it was usually March, I believe, it might have been moved a little bit.
A couple day?
No, 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 the conferences, there were always three early dismissal days for conferences, usually at the end of March or the beginning of April. So really, the only addition here is the early dismissal for the professional development. So there have always been three early dismissal days. I know having a fourth one adds to it. And I would just also say, in October, when we originally had all of those early dismissal days, one, one thing that's unique about this particular year is that Yom Kippur is incredibly late. Normally, Yom Kippur is in September, so that we don't end up with quite as many days as we had in this original calendar.
Mr. Asa?
So I just want to, from Dr. Jones, you mentioned that the entire district leadership team and everything had weighed in on this. So would you say that it's safe to say that the majority or a high number of that team felt that this draft two still met their needs?
Yes, we had, I sent out three options, just for them to look at, trying to adjust, trying to find ways to fit the calendar, according to the input the Board gave us back. They would love to have had the October conferences in November, but when we actually put it on the calendar, it was worse. It was, it was not good. So they picked, it was really this calendar, or lining up three early releases in October, which, you know, they liked having three early releases, but the Board didn't want the three. It was what I was hearing.
Okay, but so, but the bottom line is that the team is comfortable with draft two and meeting their needs of professional development?
Yes.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
Just one quick note, that I appreciate the changes. I appreciate the sensitivity in October, I just, this is a more academic-looking calendar, I appreciate the change with May, so thank you for the responsiveness, and I'm glad that the team is on board with it.
I second that, I appreciate the changes also. Any additional comments by the Board? Okay, this is the voting items, we'll go to the public. Any members of the public like to comment? Okay, back to the Board.
I apologize, so the, the six snow days, because the, you know, the impact on April break potentially, so just to be clear, so November 20, I mean, excuse me, June 24th is the drop-dead, school will not extend past this point in June, after the 24th, it is out of the April break, correct?
That is correct, or I'll bring you and request you, like I had to do the year before last, if it's a weird winter, where we could go to 181 or something of that nature. And the other thing that is different this year is that normally, we take the, the day off the back end, wait, am I saying that backwards? It's normally done the other way, where the April break, beginning with the last day of April 17th, usually, it would have come off the first day, but we couldn't do that because it's Good Friday.
Ah, right, good point.
So I reversed that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Last call, any questions? Okay. Approval of the 2019-2020 Fairfield Public Schools Student Calendar, recommended motion, the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Fairfield Public Schools Calendar, all in favor? All opposed? Eight, one, motion passes. Okay, Mr. Mancusi, oh, he's already there. Update on the ECC progress to date?
This is another slide show?
You have to move again.
Yeah. Now where the hell?
My name is Rob Mancusi, I'm the Director of Special Education, and I'm with, here with Kristin Bruno, who is the Coordinator of Early Childhood Special Education in Fairfield. We're up, we're here tonight to provide the Board with an update on the work that we've been doing in terms of gathering information for next steps, in terms of our facilities challenge, challenges at the ECC. So the first couple slides are going to just be a review of why are we discussing early childhood programming facilities? We reviewed this at our last meeting. We're here because our primary location, located at Fairfield Ward High School, we have exceeded maximum capacity. In 2016-17, you recall, we opened up a new classroom at the ECC at Stratfield, I mean, at Ward. At the start of the 17-18 school year, due to increased enrollment, we opened up an additional classroom, we had to move to a different location at Stratfield School. We project that enrollment at the ECC will continue to grow, and this will impact ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers, which you've heard us talk a lot about tonight, as well as it will have an impact on special education teacher caseloads. These are some numbers, some student enrollment data from 2009 to 2018. The top number, our numbers for October 1st figures, the bottom number in that second row is the June 1st number. So you can see how the, the program enrollment has grown since 2009. We project to end this year at, with 165 students, and to begin the 1920 year with 130 students, which continues that trend of increased enrollment. On the bottom there, you will see the ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers in early childhood classes. Last June, June of 2018, our percentage of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers was about 15 to 35 percent, depending on the class. That was at the ECC location at Ward. We're not able to get those figures for you tonight at the Stratfield location, we will have that for the next meeting. And in September 2018, we told you, we opened, you know, with a percentage of 20 to 40 percent of our students were non-disabled peers. And that was at the ECC Ward location, as well as the Stratfield location. Our AM and PM classes at Stratfield were, started at 40 percent this year, with the, with the percentage varying a little bit at the Ward location, depending on the specific class. Okay, this just looks at the percentage of non-disabled peers in early childhood classes over time at the start of the school year. These numbers, as you know, fluctuate with rolling enrollment. So this year, about 31 percent combined was our, the percentage of non-disabled peers we had. So keep in mind, our, our goal is to get as close to that 50-50 ratio as we possibly can. Our current, this is a little bit more review, current early childhood programming facilities. We have six classrooms located at the Fairfield Ward High School facility that services students with disabilities and non-disabled peers. They attend school four days per week. Our one ECC program at Stratfield services students with disabilities and non-disabled peers, they attend five days per week. And then our classroom at Stratfield Elementary and our Burr Elementary Programs that serve unidentified students, they also attend five days a week. So you can see that there is a little bit discrepancy in, in the schedules. Okay, the sources of information gathered since September 2018 regarding preschool programming, the Board had charged Kristin and I to gather some information and come back and report on our work to this point. So since we last met, we had the pleasure of hosting several parent focus groups, which we were pleased to see many Board members were able to attend and participate. We had phone calls with parents of students who attended the ECC at Stratfield Elementary School. I had reported back in September that I was able to speak to a large majority of the parents who had attended the ECC at Stratfield program during the 17-18 school year. Late this afternoon and this evening, I was also able to make contact with about eight parents of students in the ECC program at Stratfield Elementary School. And I'm happy to say, those parents were very pleased with the quality program they're receiving at Stratfield. More information from those parents will be presented when I'm able to make more contact with the remaining, I think there's five or six parents. Two staff meetings with the early childhood staff, we had, today, we met with the, the early childhood staff at the end of the day, so we can kind of give them a preview of tonight's meeting, and, and, you know, give them an opportunity to ask questions or make Kristin and I have met with our early childhood consultant on two occasions to date, with a third meeting being scheduled. We've visited several area preschool programs, not to replicate what they are, because we are who we are, but it's interesting, at least for me, as someone who has not worked in a preschool program in probably 10 years in my career, but just to have conversations with other folks about early childhood education, and to talk to folks about challenges they face. Kristin does, is a member of the Early Childhood Council through CESS, so she, she does get a lot of information that she's able to share with me. We visited potential external locations, which will remain unnamed at this time, and we've visited, we've met with the elementary leadership team to gather their input, and then we've looked at some Fairfield Public School elementary schools to determine the feasibility of developing a second potential early childhood program in one of our elementary schools. So that's, those are the sources of, of our information that we're going to be reporting to you tonight. The agenda items that were reviewed at the focus groups, because they were structured groups, and they lasted generally about 45 to 60 minutes, one of the groups ran a little bit longer, that was bigger. We reviewed the reason why we were there, because we had outgrown, have outgrown, the location at Fairfield Ward High School. We reviewed the October 1st and the June 1st five-year student enrollment data at the ECC from 2014 to the present, that we had previously reviewed with the Board back on September 11th. And then we had discussed that we did take a look at the, the data since 2009, which we just updated. Additionally, we sought input from all group participants on what they considered to be important or critical factors in high-quality programming, or high-quality important or critical factors in high-quality programming, or high-quality preschool programming. And then we sought input from, from members of the groups on potential solutions to our facility challenges. So, our parent groups. We had the pleasure of meeting with five parent groups. We had very active parents who provided a great amount of input in terms of critical factors that they look for in terms of a preschool program. They overwhelmingly felt that the sense of community that they get at the Ward site is something that they value greatly, and they feel that they're not alone. Many of them, obviously, young parents dealing with or facing having to deal with a disability for the first time can be overwhelming. I will say, in speaking with Stratfield parents about that, they also feel supported by their team, albeit a smaller group of professionals, they also feel supported by their team at Stratfield. Other things that parents valued was ongoing collaboration and communication of among all staff members. They liked that all related services were on one site. They had access to the speech pathologist, the school psychologist, the social worker, OTPT, BCBA, the nurse, all at one site. They valued the fact that certified staff working at the ECC had expertise in early childhood education, because we know that it is a different animal. Opportunities for play was important for parents, for their students, that they still had an opportunity to play. Access to unified arts. We know that the students at Stratfield's ECC program have greater access to the unified arts, but that was another important factor that parents wanted us to look into moving forward, as well as manageable class sizes. And it came up universally, the increased ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers. We always keep that 50-50 split in mind. Okay. Some more important factors in preschool programming that we received from parents was a balance in teaching academics with social communication and independent skill. Faculty equipped for preschool, or facilities equipped for preschool students, particularly bathrooms and playgrounds is important. Administrators who understand early childhood education, or preschool children, and professional development specific for preschool students. Programming flexibility, it's important to be able to offer students with disabilities in, at this level, a continuum of services within one site. Manageable special education teacher caseloads, that's important. Available early childhood resources to parents. It's a way to get parents deeply involved in SEPTA, empowering parents to understand their child's disability, and then offering parent support groups. One of our jobs at all levels is to help parents understand their child's disability, particularly for young parents who are dealing with a child with a disability for the first time, it's extremely important. All right. Parent focus groups. Some of the possible solutions to our current facility challenges. They offered up that we investigate potential external locations to relocate the Early Childhood Center, which we're currently doing. They also offer, suggested we investigate the possibility of acquiring additional space at Fairfield Ward High School. That one is in yellow, because that's kind of canceled out, because there is no additional space at Fairfield Ward High School to expand our ECC program. Placing portable classrooms at current early childhood education site. We felt that that would be a difficult option to pursue as well. In addition, investigate available space in our elementary schools and consider the possibility of redistricting. Some other solutions that parents offered to address current challenges was to investigate the possibility of developing two ECCs within the Fairfield Public Schools, possibly finding some space in one other location to kind of replicate the program that we currently have, and have two teams. Relocate again to existing schools, lease commercial space, contact a local realtor to see if there is any additional potential space that us in the district are aware of. And then, one of the things that they offered up is consider building a new early childhood center. We, at this time, felt that that was a last resort, because there is the possibility of available space in district if we're not able to locate an external site. Early childhood staff input. This is from our staff, important factors in preschool programming. If at any time anybody has a question, just please interrupt me. So our staff felt that maintaining that sense of community was a critical component to, you know, our preschool programming in Fairfield. Programming that offers, obviously, a continuum of services as stated by the parents, collaborative model within classrooms and within disciplines, focus on all the developmental areas of a child, including cognition, academics, communication, social behavioral, motor, staff with preschool expertise is important, and programming that supports parents and families, and then your increased percentage of peer role models.
Mr. Mancusi, I might just ask, in the essence of time, if you can just summarize each slides, because we still have a couple to go.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Additional staff input was, you know, appropriate space, alignment with kindergarten standards, smaller class sizes, smaller teacher caseloads, and appropriate playground equipment, similar to stuff that the parents had reported. The solutions that they offered, you heard tonight that they're proposing or that they're endorsing, one site. Relocate to a bigger facility. Investigate utilizing additional space at Ward, which we already said there, it doesn't seem to be any additional space at Ward. Investigate external facilities, which we're doing. Redistrict to Fairfield Public Schools with lower enrollment, and convert a portion of one elementary school into an early childhood program. Another one that we, is bolded in, in yellow, because it's more programmatic-related than facilities-related, is to develop a program for students who need an additional year before entering kindergarten. The elementary leadership team. Our principals and our elementary leadership group felt important factors in programming was alignment of curriculum between preschool and kindergarten, to take a deep look at our early childhood outcome data and see how that aligns with our expectations for students in kindergarten, align our IEP goals and objectives more with kindergarten curriculum, they focusing on service delivery to increase student independence and small group service for students, increase collaboration and professional development amongst special and general ed teachers, and supporting parents through that transition. Possible solutions for challenges that the elementary staff felt was maintain a three-year-old program at the Ward location, and consider developing a four-year-old program within the elementary schools. Investigate the possibility of expanding or relocating the preschool into the elementary schools. The yellow ones are discounted ones, they're more related to programmatic than facilities, and cluster preschool classrooms in elementary schools that will allow for collaboration among general and special ed staff. Our early childhood consultant, what we did, basically, we met with her to discuss all the concerns, various models, looked at schedules, we looked at or discussed the importance of developing a consistent preschool schedule according, across all our programs, grouping of students, three, four-year-olds, mixed age groups, our child find in our evaluation process, the process by which we transition students to kindergarten, class size. Again, this came up, the ratio of students with disabilities and non-disabled peers, service delivery, and increased collaboration between preschool and kindergarten. I will say, I think I missed over it when I was reviewing it, of all the programs that we've visited so far, we, all four of them had a minimum of a 50-50 ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers. Visits to area school districts, that just goes, we've, the four areas we've visited, one school was, one district was, it was a pre-K through two school, they had their own area, so, and they had at least a 50-50 ratio. One school had its own early childhood section, but because of increased enrollment, they had to take over a classroom that's attached to the elementary school that they were in. Another district was among three different locations in elementary schools, but they're hoping in the next few years to build an early childhood site. And then there was one district that is within five schools throughout their district, and they're pleased with their programming. Visited and, when we were, and also, when we visited other districts, class sizes did not exceed 15, schedules changed or varied among district, as well as students' access to specials. We visited, we visited two potential external sites. There's additional external sites to visit. The considerations that we look for in selecting potential early childhood programming facilities include accessibility, playgrounds, bathroom facilities, classroom space, et cetera. So analysis of our schools, one of the must-haves, or the main features we're looking for, is air conditioning. We need, we need space that's air-conditioned for our students with disabilities, ADA accessibility, playgrounds. We forgot to put bathrooms here, but appropriate bathrooms for our students, current classrooms available, location, and to look at what schools have unique programs and space available, and what schools don't have district-wide unique programs and might have some space available. To date, we've visited Stratfield Elementary School, Holland Hill, McKinley, and Burr. We're going to visit North Stratfield as a potential site, to report back to the Board prior to 2018 in December to your meeting. And I will be meeting with Dr. Jones, obviously, to have this ongoing discussion of early childhood programming in Fairfield and next steps. So our next steps. We need to work on the schedule. So Kristin and I need to work with, with the staff at the ECC on a proposed preschool schedule for the 1920 school year, that's consistent across all early childhood classrooms. Work on developing a proposed schedule. We want to take a look at the remaining FPS sites, North Stratfield right now, and revisit the other ones that I mentioned, as well as the additional external programming facilities. Gather the remaining information or input from parents who attend the ECC program at Stratfield, and then to come to the Board back in December with some recommendations for the 1920 school year, which could include long-term solutions and short-term solutions. That is an update.
Before I open it up for questions, I think we're going to need a motion to extend the meeting. Ms. Jacobson, do you have a second?
Well, to extend.
Oh. To extend to, Dr. Jones, can you use some guidance for the agenda items? You know better in terms of timing. 11:30, 45 more minutes?
Yes.
Till 11:30?
Depends on the questions on this item.
We're not going to be anywhere near done by 11:30. No way.
Can I at the very least request that people send their email in their questions for this? It's, it's a tremendous amount of information. I appreciate it. I definitely have questions. We're not, there are no recommendations in here. I don't see any reason why we can't jump off of this for email. That's my personal take. I have questions, but I can email them.
Let's deal with extending the meeting first, and then I will address that.
Make a motion to extend.
To what?
To 11:30.
11:30?
You want, you want to make it longer?
Well, I'd make a motion to extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
We're not.
We're not.
It won't be done by 11:30, so.
And we're not done, and we've got to manage our time better.
I'll second the motion. Am I making the motion or second the motion?
You all, I will make a motion to extend the meeting to midnight.
Second. All in favor? Four, motion fails. All opposed? Well, so many, so all opposed. I'm sorry. In favor? Ms. Leeper, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Vitale. All opposed? Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Max Canelli, Mr. Asa.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
Second. Ms. Gerber, all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Ms. Max Canelli, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, Ms. Gerber.
I guess. Right, is that six?
That's six.
What would you have to do with?
I'm sorry. I know, I know, I know. Okay. All opposed? Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Peterson. Motion passes. Meeting extended to 11:30. Back to the discussion. Discussion to Mrs. Canelli's suggestion that we email questions.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Moving forward. Project update on Holland Hill, Mill Hill, and Sherman. Thank you, Mr. Mancusi.
Thank you.
This was just supposed to be a very quick update. We don't have anybody coming to report, so Holland Hill is on schedule, moving, moving is as intended, so that they can be in that building after the winter holiday. Mill Hill, obviously, the, the building committee meets tomorrow night, I believe. Meets tomorrow night, and again, with Mill Hill, right now, if you were asking from the staff perspective, we do not believe they will make the June 30th deadline. It would be great, but we did review today just what that impact would be, and it really has more to do with the financing aspect, as long as the, you know, bodies will continue to move the project forward, it should still stay on time. In the long run, what it will mean is they'll lose a year, because the reimbursement, we won't be guaranteed the reimbursement rate, we won't know until that actually goes, goes in, and it will extend it and push it out a year before we can get reimbursed. So that really will be the impact of that, but the project should continue moving forward. Sherman, again, is on track, working hard on Sherman. I don't have any update on that unless in your committee, you guys want to share more.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
So, in terms of your explanation on the Mill Hill project, not meeting the June 30th 2019 deadline for submission to the state for reimbursement, therefore would not necessarily delay anything else on the waterfall?
That's correct.
Everything will stay on time?
That's correct. Yeah, as long as it continues to move along through the public bodies.
Okay.
And they will give the funding to, you know.
They're just, they just wouldn't get the money.
For, for that planning component.
Right.
Yeah, it will come later. I believe it was 2021. Actually, I have it here somewhere, but I think it's 2021.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about impact on the waterfall in terms of other projects afterwards with that.
No, and that's, that's one of the reasons we were actually checking. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
It shouldn't have an impact. But there are other town bodies that weigh in on what they think should happen, so I don't think this Board should automatically assume it won't have an impact, because sometimes the other town bodies, they just say, there's only so many decisions we can make regarding money, and now that you've pushed that decision off a year, they may think, we're not going to move forward. to move forward on it, on another issue. So, so, I think you ought to be careful that you don't say, yep, absolutely no impact, because we have other town bodies that may think otherwise.
Ms. Jacobson?
So, the other, the building committee, basically, sorry Jess, if you, if you happen to know, if you don't know, the building committee is aware of the situation in terms of the June thirtieth deadline, and Mr. Cullen, and, et cetera.
Yeah, no, as I had told the board back in, I can't remember which meeting, I think it was the October ninth meeting, I did mention that, that the Mill Hill Building Committee members had said at that time, at that meeting, that they were hesitant to confirm that they could in fact make it to June thirtieth, make the June thirtieth deadline, so, that was, this isn't a surprise, I mean, this is something that was certainly mentioned at this table and, and at their building committee meetings. So I, I, I'm assuming nothing really has changed since then, and if, if anything, maybe perhaps they feel even more sure, because another month has passed, and, you know, they just, I'm sorry, what?
No, go ahead, I finish up.
No, that's, you, you said, I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay, no, what I'm trying to get at is, if we don't have a June thirtieth submission date for this project, are there going to be increased costs, possible reimbursement issues for everything else on the waterfall? And to make it abundantly clear that that could be the case if that date is not met, is my question. Tom, maybe to Mr. Cullen, or, I don't know whom.
Well, it's not, it's not really the June, the June thirtieth date will depend on whether or not the, the town continues to fund the project. If they fund the project, then we continue moving. If it gets held up again, and we don't get the remaining funding, then, yes, it'll be pushing everything back.
It's when, whether or not the building committee goes before town bodies with?
Within the timeframe.
With, within the timeframe to secure the funding. Any other questions?
Well, I guess just one thing, and I know Mrs. Jacobson touched on this, but I do just want to voice my concern that everything in the subsequent years, 2021, 2122, and so on, will be impacted if this 18.72 million dollar project that is in this long-range facilities plan, if it does not get approved by June thirtieth of this year. So I guess the question would be, does it make sense, if there is, should there be some drop dead date by which we say, this project is not going to be approved by June thirtieth, we will not make that state deadline, does it make sense then to look at the 2021, and, oh, renovate student bathrooms, new AC for cafeteria at Ward, does it make sense to look into some of those projects and move them up, or is that just not even going to happen? Does that mean we will have no 18.7 million submitted, nor will we have any of the other things behind it, and will those things, as Mr. Dwyer pointed out, not move forward? That's my concern, is that not only will this project be slowed up, and we could potentially see less reimbursement and higher costs if we push it out a year, but also, everything behind it in line on this very extensive, long-range plan will be impacted, both in terms of the timing and in terms of the costs. Yeah, I might just send something out to the board that will help clarify, we were working on that today, but it should not push the project out, it will only be if the, the town does not fund the project, because what we're talking about is the reimbursement, getting that in for June thirtieth, and Sal was actually following that up today, and it will push the reimbursement out, but I think, let us send something to you, from, from Sal, who actually deals with reimbursement, I think that would be helpful for the board. Thank you.
And, if anything comes out of the building committee tomorrow, in terms of, because a lot of, a lot of this is the reimbursement, but then we're also talking about what the building committee is going to do in terms of.
Right, and just as a heads up to this board, I was going to say this during the committee liaison reports, I will not be attending the meeting tomorrow night, because as my job as Parks and Rec Liaison, I'm also a commission member, we are voting on next year's operating budget tomorrow night, I cannot miss that meeting, so I will be missing the Mill Hill and the Ludlow Building Committee meetings tomorrow night, but I am, I will get input from both of those building committees as to what has taken place. If anyone wants to attend either of those meetings to find out for themselves, please feel free, but I will not be there.
But Sal will be there, Mr. Moorebeal will be there, so he can also follow up with any additional information, Dr. Jones, for tomorrow, for the Mill Hill Building Committee, if any additional information comes out in terms of their timeline for going, not for the state reimbursement, but before town bodies, that would be helpful information to share. Mr. Dwyer?
I think Mrs. Gerber is correct, as much as I'd like to think that, no, we're just going to move this forward and we'll see what happens. It's not just a matter of reimbursement, you're asking town bodies to move a project forward not knowing what reimbursement they're going to get. And if I'm not smoking something funny, if, if we were to ask the board of finance and the RTM to say, move a project forward, we'll tell you a year later whether you're going to get the 21% or not, that's a tough sell. So, so I think that, very shortly, we do have to address whether we want to hopscotch projects around as a way of not losing some projects, without throwing in the towel too quickly.
Well, then, I would suggest that we have that discussion, Mr. Asa?
I would echo what Mr. Dwyer and Mrs. Gerber said, and think that we need to look very soon, and if it's looking like we're not going to meet that June thirtieth deadline, then it's time to look what we can put ahead of Mill Hill.
Dr. Jones, do you think that, that we would have that information by next month, being that we're going to be voting potentially on the non-recurring capital projects, and I think that we should, you talk about all these projects together?
We can certainly try.
Okay.
I'm not sure we'll have any definitive answer, but, yeah.
Mr. Asa? Do you have a recommendation of when you think that we should make that decision?
In the interest of time, I'd like to hear from Mr. Cullen, but I can email maybe, or maybe Mr. Cullen can, through Dr. Jones, can send us an update on the feasibility of any projects down the road that could be maybe put ahead, and see if it's something that could be feasible.
All right, moving forward, first quarter financial report, Ms. Muncell?
Hi there, Doreen Muncell, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. First quarter report is always preliminary, being that we're only three months into the year, and only one month into the school year, so there's a lot of information that we don't have. What we do know at this point in time is that we did have an increase in staff due to either classroom or, and/or student needs, of 5.9 teachers and 4.7 special ed paras. We also know that as of September thirtieth, we have not realized sufficient savings to, in staff replacement for retirements and turnover to balance budgeted salaries. So, that shortage is approximately 150,000 as of September thirtieth, and we will certainly continue to monitor that very closely, and determine course of action in a timely manner. We also do know that we have another three teacher retirements that are not reflected in this report, that are upcoming, and that we have continual change throughout the year, so, definitely something on our radar. That's basically, all we know at this point that's of interest, with only three months into the year.
Any questions? Ms. Pitco?
Sorry, I just missed it, how many paras did you say?
4.7.
FTE.
What is the technology integration specialist that this?
It's a .5 at each one of the high schools. And the 1.025 gen ed is all over the place, it's like .1s, where the high school, as you know, had a higher enrollment, which bumped some of their sections up, so, some of their, just different subjects needed to go from .6 to .8, or variations, so that's an eclectic mix.
Were the special ed paras new students, or just developed through the IPs that the need was there?
It was both. It was, I think we had one student move in, and then there was additional needs.
And if I may just point out, I think, two positive things, even though our staffing is different than what we thought it would be, as far as we budgeted 19 retirements, we had 13, we have three more that have waited to retire until the fall, which we just mentioned, which will make that 16, but within that 13, it was 11.4 FTE, which means that some of those people were three-quarter time, instead of full-time. But along with that, the one thing that we, that I am very happy about is we actually had the best teacher retention rate that we've had in about the last decade. So, that's a good thing, but it also causes a different problem, so, we'll be looking at that closely in the budget this year, because we would like to continue that trend and be able to retain our teachers. The other thing I just want to point out, which we've had a lot of discussion about special education tonight, and in that paragraph on page two at the bottom about pupil personnel expenses, although it's just at the beginning of the year, to have a positive balance in pupil services of 340,000, we know that that will change, and it's already starting to change, but you don't ever see that. And that is very much attributed to, right now, the last two years that I was here, we were already well over a million dollars in the hole, just in outplacements. We are spot-on right now where we projected to be, Mr. Mancusi's team has brought back, I think we're up to about 11 students, because the board is funding programs like Impact, our CLCS, we're keeping districts in programs, so I just want to point that out, that's a, it's a moving target all year long, and that, that's a really hard thing to do, so, you know, kudos to Ms. DC, who does a lot of our legal, working on that, just helping be that calming force in some of those PPTs, representing the district, and to Mr. Mancusi and his staff.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Muncell. First read of 2019, 2020 Capital Non-Recurring Projects, Mr. Cullen?
Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations, and Nancy Burns is here, Director of Information Technology for one of the larger projects. I want to start off by thanking you for this opportunity to present the proposed non-recurring 2019, 2020 Capital Non-Recurring Projects. For many of you that know, number one, you should have a copy of this booklet, it'll help you follow along, I'll do a condensed version so we can do it quickly. The town bodies met at the Capitol Financial Summit in September, where all of these were listed in the waterfall and the facility plan, so, nothing is new or surprising. It is one of our largest requests, in the time that I've been working for Fairfield Public Schools, there are eight projects totaling $2,541,755, all with backup and proposals of previous bids. All of them are critical to maintaining the facilities in the district. So, the, the first item is a district-wide for all our schools, starting on page one, the Information Technology Switch Replacement Project, this is phase two of a two-phase project. Nancy Burns was instrumental in getting phase one completed this past year, and we have very good news that the original request for phase two was more money than this, she was able to file for a federal E-rate grant, and it was approved and accepted, so we've saved a bit of money for the town and the district, so that was kudos to Nancy. The second project, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because there's not time, but I can take a lot of questions at the end. Second project is on page eight. This might be confusing to some of you if you didn't have time to read it, but, this is based on the original old Johnson Control Building Management Systems that were negotiated in 1999, approved in 2000, and implemented in 2001. One of the features is, we have nine NOP computers that our internal maintenance staff and our preventive maintenance contractors can use to literally dial into any school's HVAC system and see what the temperature controls are doing, are any units down, get a feel for what might be going on in a school without actually visiting the school. When they do that, it goes across the existing server we have, and opens it up for security risk, for anybody to go in and do damage to our server. The town is in the same boat, they're fixing their side of it, this is our proposal to fix the school side. The next project is on page 14. This is the Security Infrastructure Project, it'll be an actual phase five. I met with the Chief of Police and Lieutenant Wyah in June, and then again in August, to review what their most important priorities were moving forward with all of the work we have done, and they identified two areas where they were concerned we should provide some more protection. And essentially, it was the interior classroom doors that might have a view sash, what's called a view sash, and a piece of glass, that someone might be able to shoot through that glass or break it, reach in and open a locked, lockdown door. Also, any of our larger schools that have large places of assembly glass, so, thinking of a cafeteria, a weight room, an APR, a library, that might have a lot of windows in the corridor wall, whereas if that room was filled with a lot of students, and there was a perpetrator in the school, they could shoot through all the glass. So, our intention is to try and get intrusion panels and ballistic glass in some of those locations in all our schools.
We just want, can we just go through?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, let's just go through them all, and then we'll do questions.
Next project's on page 20. This is at Dwight Elementary School, and I've been working with an engineer for almost two years now to look at the old Johnson Control BMS systems, which are very outdated, we're having trouble getting parts on, and we should be considering upgrading all of those controls for HVAC equipment in the whole district. So I was trying to look at a long-term plan to try and tackle two, three schools at a time, deal with the new schools that are getting renovations and additions, and trying to plan accordingly. We thought Dwight would be a good starting point, it's a very small school, it has very few pieces of equipment, it can almost be like our Guinea pig to test out and try a new control system, and upgrade the whole building, exhaust systems, any rooftop equipment, and build a program around that for the whole district to move forward. So that's based on that, and we do have a long-term plan for that control project. The next project is on page 28. This is the Fairfield-Ludlow High School tennis courts. Those tennis courts just cost us $41,750 to repair. The contractor that awarded the bid essentially said it was a waste of money, that the cracks were so bad, and there were so many, that he wasn't going to guarantee them even for another year, he said they were going to all come back. It was time to replace these tennis courts. They were done in bituminous paved material, they normally get eight to 10 years out of those, these are much older than that, so we wanted to propose going with the same thing we just did at Ward High School Blake tennis courts. We ripped out the four courts, did a post-tension concrete system, it's guaranteed and warranted for 20 years, the coating that's put on top of it with the lines is guaranteed and warranted for 10. No cracks, is what they're saying. So it's a better system, we've gotten huge feedback about the new courts at Blake's, at Ward High School Blake's tennis courts, and I believe the town is even thrilled about it and going to propose post-tension concrete for their courts. So we need to do this at Ludlow High School. Next project is on page 34. This is at Fairfield Ward High School, the Fitz House Building houses four large rooftop units, two are 50-ton, two are 30-ton, they're from 1991, you should be able to get 18 to 20 years out of them, and we are beyond that. So we've got a good PM program, we're maintaining them, keeping them running, but they are failing. The actual. The actual piece of equipment we want to replace is leaking so badly, we just put money into it to build like a canopy roof over it and duck work to try and protect it from leaking. It needs to be replaced. It's going to involve a 300-ton crane, very big job, very expensive. Structural steel needs to be added, it spans the corridor areas, so there's a lot of work involved with this, and we're going to start tackling these one at a time. The next project is on page 40. This is Stratfield Elementary School. We have 15 roofs on this building, this is only one of them. It expired in 2013. It's maintained very well, and our PM program has done very well with this, but it is time to replace it. We're seeing leaks down into the new administration area. It splits the APR and the administration area, the small roof. It's got a large piece of equipment on it, but we need to replace it. It's very little money, but it needs a building committee because we can get reimbursement on roof replacements. That's it.
Josh.
One more, number 46, page 46. This is for the Walter Fitzgerald campus. We are anticipating that, we'd like to get them out of the location they're in due to the condition of that building and the failure of the existing owners to do a lot of work and upkeep. You all got a chance to tour that building, so it's kind of really just a placeholder, and that's what we told the town bodies when we did our update at the financial summit. We needed a placeholder at least.
If I may add too, we're going to update the board in December on facilities. Correct. Right. And that'll be part of that discussion.
Correct. So, that's the ones that are in the booklet. The superintendent and I were talking this week about the possibility of a large project that we were going to put in our operating budget that's at Tomlinson Middle School. Tomlinson Middle School flooring, the existing vinyl composite tile flooring is failing in the building, and it's due to the fact that the building is extremely old. When Turner Construction and a building committee did the work on that building in 2005, finished in 2007, a lot of the new VCT was just put over old VAT or old VCT, which is on plywood, and believe it or not, in some parts of the building, wood floor joists still exist in this building. So, there's a lot of movement, the tile floors are not holding up well, and they started popping. We started to address it with a project request in 2015-16 that got rejected. I put it back into the budget for 16-17 in phases, and due to the budget constraints, we were holding $2 million. The first selectmen recaptured that and gave it back to us, but there was a $33,000 hold that wasn't taken care of. We took it out of this project. So, in essence, we've avoided the Tomlinson Middle School flooring repairs now three years, and they're very bad. We're going to put into the operating budget and present to you two phases. The total job is about $435,000 to do the building and the locations that we've addressed. We were going to put in $265,000 for the worst parts, and then the next year, the remainder of $175,000 to try and cover it. But we're now thinking that maybe that should be a nonrecurring request and something we would draft up with this board's approval for the next few town bodies we have to address. Something to consider. So, that's my presentation.
Okay. Ms. Pitko, follow Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Gerber, Ms. Jacobson.
Okay. My first question has to do with the intrusion panels. Are these just, I don't want to say not breakable, but is it harder to break this glass? Is it bulletproof? I'm trying to understand what you're replacing it with.
Intrusion panel, a bullet can actually go through it, certain types of bullets can go through it, but it can't shatter it, so they can break the whole piece of glass or window and get in or get through.
Okay.
And what we're proposing is, on the narrow line view sashes in the doors, we could do intrusion panel, and Sal Morbeto's actually working with companies that might be able to take out the existing glass, put in intrusion panel, so it's not just put over it. Where there are larger places of assembly and larger windows, we are working with the police to look at a ballistic glass, which would stop a bullet.
So, my next question has to do with Dwight. Looking at the HVAC, and we had recently, many of us had been there and taken a tour, I'm trying to understand, in the terms of how this new HVAC system is going to work. I know one of the rooms we walked in had a smell, and you guys were still trying to figure out where that came from.
The new HVAC system is for the building management system, so it's only for the HVAC equipment that's providing mechanical means of fresh air, air conditioning, or heating. So, there's very little of that in Dwight. It's the administration area, I think the library, maybe the gym. The rest of the school, the room that had an odor is housed with a separate air conditioning split unit. That's not on the building control system. So, when our guys dial into that school, they're not looking at all those AC split units, it's not tied in wire-wise. This is all the exhaust systems, they'll be able to research and see, and the existing mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning and heating only. So, Dwight has very little of that. It'd be a good guinea pig for us to try this out on and see what type of new systems there are out there to get ready to do all of our schools.
I was going to say, how old is the HVAC system that we have there now?
1991 it was last updated. So, and...
Okay.
We're supposed to look at those every 15 to 20 years, and we're over that.
My next question is about the Ludlow High Tennis Courts. I remember when we did Ward's. Do you know roughly off the top of your head how much we paid for those tennis courts?
Ward's bid came in at $327,000 for four courts, all post-tension concrete, all new nets and posts, and all fencing and gates. So, it was a complete project.
So, we're doing six at this one for $550? But it's the same material that we're using?
Yes.
Okay. The Fitz House HVAC system, is that the same system that you're going to be using at Dwight, or is this a different one?
No. Ward High School's Fitz House is a replacement of a piece of equipment.
Oh.
It's not the building management system.
It's 100 grand more, so I figured I'd ask.
No, that's a totally different animal. That's a, there's four huge pieces of equipment on top of Fitz House to feed mechanical means of fresh air, air conditioning, and heating to the whole school building. Just Fitz House. Two or 50-ton units, two or 30-ton.
To the whole school or just Fitz House?
Just Fitz House.
Okay, because you just said the whole school, that's why I'm asking.
Just the Fitz House. So, we have to start replacing those.
I think that's it.
Dr. Asa?
Okay, so I'm going to try and be brief here. I fully support all of these projects in the nonrecurring budget. However, one of the things that's become blatantly clear is, at Dwight and other schools, that the HVAC and AC is a health and safety issue, and it's one of the things the Finance Committee's been exploring. One of the things I would like to throw out there for the board to consider, and you might all think I'm crazy, but I'm seriously intrigued in the idea of moving a lot of these projects to the upcoming operating budget, which I know would increase the budget. If you took $2.5 million of these projects and added them to next year's budget based on the current numbers, we're looking at roughly a 1.5% increase on top of whatever else Dr. Jones proposes. I think this district is in dire need of maintenance and repairs. It's something we've neglected way too long, and I think that it is time. While I am a very fiscally conservative individual, I'm also a smart spender, and I think investment here is a long-term goal here. And if we are looking at major HVAC and ACs and units, we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars over years and years and years, right? So, if we're able to allocate some nonrecurring budget to split units, let's say in elementaries like Dwight and some of the schools that don't have them, I'm very intrigued by that, and I would welcome other board members' thoughts and comments on this, and if it's something that we're willing to go and fight for and ask for a higher operating budget on the premise that we are doing a long-term investment in the district and not just, we're not throwing money out the window, we're asking for smart spending, and in a way of doing it this way, we're covering, we're killing two birds with one stone, right? We're keeping it, but we're adding to this, and Tomlinson maybe can go in here, air conditioning split units, but I would just ask that that be explored.
We are. I have an update for the board that I just finished the writing of a request for qualifications to get to the town purchasing director to send out to bid, which would be to seek a large engineering firm and contracting firm to work together on providing mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning for every school building as an option one. Option two would be to try and support some of our smaller elementary schools with more split units, or another quick way to find a fix for those.
One, just point of clarification. I said I fully support all of the projects in here. I do have questions and reservations on one with the Walter Fitzgerald campus. I am a little concerned that that is going to raise a lot of questions with other town bodies and moving that through when we actually don't have a location. I understand the premise of it, but I just want to be prepared and let us, that we should all be prepared for the idea that without an actual facility and moving, it's asking for money that we don't know. But again, I'm talking about moving these projects to the operating budget.
Yes, and I base this on a placeholder. When we moved Maintenance Department into 418 Meadow Street and the Alternative High School into Walter Fitzgerald Campus, it cost us money. One was $127,000, one was $157,000, just to set those programs up, the proper spaces, walls, PM, all of that work we had to do to move them into those spaces. So, that's how I base this number we needed to hold. We need to have something in the budget that, whether they stay at Walter Fitzgerald Campus and we need to do some upgrades, or they move, we will need funding.
I agree with Mr. Asa, and I would really, for Walter Fitzgerald particularly, to see that go into the operating budget and maybe pull something out like Tomlinson and put in a nonrecurring that has a better chance, more set numbers as we move through town bodies. Ms. Gerber was next. Are you done, Ms. Asa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
I actually have a whole bunch of questions, but I think at this point I'll probably email them to you. Through the chair to Mr. Asa, though, I'm curious, just in terms of your proposal, why wouldn't we just bond everything? Why wouldn't we propose putting everything in one bigger bond rather than have it in the operating budget?
As Mr. Cullen already stated, this is the largest request to date, I believe, and I'm feeling that we need to increase our operating budget with regards to maintenance.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, no, I was going to, I have several questions, which I'll omit, but I want to echo the concerns on Walter Fitzgerald in terms of making this a request through town bodies, just because, again, I know I'm going to speed this up, we're going to have the conversation, we don't know where we're going yet, and I see that a large percentage of this request is for bathroom upgrades, and I'm assuming that that may have been as part of, and I just want you to confirm, when we were thinking that Walter Fitzgerald might go into the ECC and we would need to change over all of those bathrooms, which may not be the case, which means this number could be significantly lower as well, yes?
No. We were considering what would we have to do at ECC if Walter Fitzgerald Campus went there, but any location we look at, the bathrooms are usually not set up for the very, very small kids. So, fixtures have to be lowered, handicap bars and ramps, all of that.
Walter Fitzgerald.
Walter Fitzgerald. I'm talking about Walter Fitzgerald.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Anyway, that was one of my, I'm echoing that, go moving on.
We'll adjust that before the next meeting.
Okay. All right, let's move on. First read of policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Cullen, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Send me questions.
What?
Send me questions.
Send me questions, okay.
I said one question. I'm sorry, just one question that might be easily answered. For 3240, it says, the tuition fees. I'm just confused because on the back, there's something that looks like the original policy, but it doesn't match up with what is changed on the front page. I'm just...
So, how they've, how we've been doing policies now is that you get, the draft with the red language tells you what was changed, and in black is what will become the new policy if we approve what's on the front. The current policy is what you can see on the red side with the strike through.
Got it, okay, thank you, thank you, got it.
Okay, recommend a motion with the Board of Education, approve the regular...
I was just going to ask that before we, I don't know if this is supposed to be a first read or the next read, if we could look at multiple districts' social media policy?
We did.
You did. Can we know which districts in any...
I'll get that for you.
Okay.
Okay, approval of minutes, recommend a motion with the Board of Education, approve the regular minutes of October 23rd, 2018. Have a motion, Ms. Pitko, fought second by Mrs. Leeper, all in favor. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Leeper, Ms. Pitko, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Naxmanelli. He was, he had his, I was waiting for him. Mr. Dwyer. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Superintendent's Report, Discussion of 2019-2020 Budget Drivers. Tell us the maintenance budget.
Yeah, I have a couple of things with that, but before I do that, I just want to mention that several of you have asked about the Dwight costs to date. So, for the odor in Room 10, the septic and the air quality reports, we've spent $19,375.87. The other thing is, there are three items that are at your seat, and I just want you to know why they're here. This is the document that didn't, I think some of you had trouble opening this. It does have the September-through-May timeline across the top, shows you why we've got to deal with early childhood center first, then that will impact even looking at Walter Fitzgerald. All of, everything is in order according to how we'll deal with those. So, wherever the box is on the left, that's when it starts, and then you can see when it's expected decisions to be made. The other two items that are in front of you, there's two policies, these are existing policies, that did not have regulations. So, when you look at application of technology, it literally was like one sentence, two sentences. But there are two, two things that I have dealt with in the last year that I wanted to make sure we had regulation for. The first one is drone technology. It is in full use now in Fairfield. Our art department has implemented through a grant from our education foundation, drones and photography. The second one is the telepresence robots. We had our first ones last year in a classroom for a student who was ill and in the hospital, and these are ones that they will call me verbally, I'm trying to give, you know, our principals and headmasters guidance on, so I wanted to make sure it was documented somewhere if you have any questions to ask about that. The second one is coming out of the Finance Committee, and again, we don't have a policy that governs advertising on school property, and that's something they've been dealing with, and I don't know, Ms. Leeper, if you're going to update on any of that, but they did want us to get started raising money, so we don't have a policy. So, what we have right now is a reg so that we make sure whoever's raising money, that we don't get ads that have alcohol and things of that nature on them. So, again, this is guidance for staff. I know the intent of the Finance Committee is to make sure that they have a discussion with the policy so that if you decide it needs to be a policy, because you can handle it neither way. So, that's what both of those are. As far as the budget drivers, I would say one of the big drivers this year is maintenance and also custodial, not only in maintenance projects, but we're also looking at, we've added over 100,000 square feet to our school district in the last decade and have not added one custodian. And it's getting to be, it's just getting to be challenging, and especially with the age of some of our buildings and the challenges we've had this year. So, that will be a big item, I think, in our budget this year. Our fixed costs, as always. High school enrollment was up a little bit this year, elementary is projected to go down, so we're looking at all those shifts in FTE, where can we make some of those changes? Things like the STEAM program that is in our district improvement, making sure we fund those. We are also looking at, again, with this whole special education discussion tonight, we need a CLCS at our middle school. We have one at elementary, we have IMPACT at high school, and we have some of our children in our brand-new program that will move to middle school. We've also brought some students back from outplacement, so you will see that reflected in the budget. So, those are probably the primary areas, I would say, right now as far as budget drivers.
Do you have a rough dollar estimate for maintenance?
Where we were starting, and we've just, I mean, we literally have just, we were all estimating today where we will be, because everybody starts putting everything in, but it was about 1.6 million. Last year, we were about 800. So, and if we add another 2 million to that, you know, yeah, it will. And I'm really looking at presenting the budget a little bit differently this year where, which kind of goes along with what you were saying, actually, Mr. Asa, I want to pull out the facilities maintenance piece, not where it physically looks different, but when we're presenting it. when we're presenting it. Here's what we have with operating, so that you can see, we're really not increasing a lot in staffing and all of those areas, but so that it'll be very easy to see that we really are increasing the facilities because of all the challenges that we're having in our buildings.
All right, any committee reports?
Just three minutes left.
Three minutes left. PTA Council Meeting next week, the Strategic Planning Committee and Transit-Orient Development will be there if anybody's interested, November 19th, at Fairfield-Ludlow. Open board comment? Any pub, yes?
A sixth grader living in Fairfield mailed a letter to me, a very nice letter, expressing concern for the number of plastic bottles we sell and therefore put into the environment. I just wanted to take note because he took the time to write me and the board, and he wanted everybody to know that this is an issue that Fairfield ought to address.
Okay. Ms. Pitco?
I want to thank everybody on the board and in the district who wore blue today for world kindness today.
Motion to adjourn?
Public comment?
Nope, public comment? Seeing none. Ms. Pitco, second. Ms. Leeper, all in favor, adjourned with 30 seconds to spare.